Today, we will be honoring four individuals who are happily awaiting to take their oath of office. I want to recognize some city officials. Thank you, Mayor Alexander, for being here and for always supporting the beautiful, wonderful children of Norfolk Public Schools. We have members of council here. We have a lot of our community members here, so thank you again, and we're going to get started. So today, we have Dr. Adele Martin taking the oath of office along with Tanya Basin, Carlos Planton, Tiffany Moore Buffalo, and Lauren Campson. So at this time, I will be turning the program over to the honorable Judge Gerald Jones.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, Mr. Mayor, and all assembled, we now move to the very important part of the program today, the administration of the oath of office. We will begin with Ms. Martin, Adele Martin, please come forward.
Technically, Judge Jones, I have them in alphabetical order. I'm sorry, so Ms. Basin, and then we'll go down the line.
Take that back.
Thank you.
I was reading the program. All right, then, Ms. Basin, if you would please come forward. Ms. Basin, are you prepared to take your oath of office?
Yes, I am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board.
As a member of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
For a term expiring December 31st, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tanner, the next person then will be Ms. Campson. Ms. Campson, good morning. Absolutely, someone here to... Ms. Campson, are you prepared to take your oath of office?
I am.
If you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board.
As a member of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
And expiring December 31st, 2027. 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so glad to be able to do it for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clanton, please come forward. Mr. Clanton, good morning.
Good morning.
Are you prepared to take your oath of office?
I am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board.
As a member of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Martin, now, please, come forward. It's always good whenever we get to it, right? Good morning. Are you prepared to take your oath of office?
I am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board.
As a member of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Ms. Moore Buffalo, please come forward. Ms. Moore Buffalo, are you prepared to take your oath of office?
Absolutely.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me then. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the school board.
As a member of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1st, 2023.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
And expiring December 31st, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the administration of the oaths. Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to ask our school board members to make any remarks if they choose to do so.
I've never been one loss for words. I just want to thank everyone for coming, no matter who you're here to support, because we're all in this work together. I am so thankful and humbled that I stand before you today as a little girl from the south side of Chicago. And this is just... I want every child in Norfolk to understand, when you have a dream and a passion inside of you that just keeps burning and you don't know what's going on, follow it. Believe it. We are all gifted and talented, and we are all have gifts to contribute to our society. And for those who are watching, children who are watching, those who are present, we as a community and city, we have to wrap around our children. We have to make sure that they can have all the opportunities and be the best individuals they can be. And so I am committed to this work. I pray every day that I come in this building and do what's best for children. And I am so thankful to be serving beside each and every one of you. Thank you for this opportunity, and let's go through it.
Are there any other board members who'd like to provide remarks?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I feel remiss in going forward in comments here without recognizing some of the esteemed guests that are here with us this morning. Mr. Mayor, we thank you for being here. Councilwoman Denise Oyster, our newest council member, Mr. J.P. Page, our Commonwealth attorney, Ms. Rameen Fadi. It's glad to have you all here with us this morning and to be able to show that support from both sides of the street. This is the second time. 2018 was my very first time, and if those who've known, a lifelong child here, born in Park Place, Landry's Point in Norfolk, proud product of Norfolk Public Schools, to be able to come back, having worked for the division for nine years, literally across the hall, and to be able to sit in that seat, and as what has been my mantra, which is being student-centered and teacher-inspired. My teachers are the ones that inspired me, a child who was the oldest of three, single-parent home, to come in and be an example. And so to keep our students first is always been the mantra there. Learning and working on this board, we've come in with different perspectives and differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, it's all about coming together to do what's in the best interest of students. And so I again look forward to being able to work with all of my colleagues here. As we have an awesome four years ahead of us, a lot of great projects, a lot of great things and initiatives, to be able to move Norfolk Public Schools to where it needs to be. And so with that, I say thank you all for the opportunity. I say for those who are watching, those who are present here, thank you to the voters of Norfolk in Ward III and throughout who have entrusted me with this opportunity. I will not let you down. I will continue to fight the good fight and continue to be a voice for those who don't have a voice. And so with that, I say thank you all, and again, thank you all for being here today.
Okay, I'd like to call for Ms. Atoy Carrington. She has some special certificates to pass out.
Good morning, everybody. And I'm sorry, but pets happen, okay? And that's all I have to say about that. All righty, so first, I'd like to call Adele Martin. Commonwealth of Virginia, City of Norfolk, to all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 8th, 2022, Adele M. Martin was duly elected member, school board, Ward 1, in the city of Norfolk for a term prescribed by law. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Electoral Board on this 15th day of November, 2022, and was signed by then Michael Candelwall, Norfolk Electoral Board Secretary. Thank you, Adele. And congratulations. Tanya. Commonwealth of Virginia, City of Norfolk, to all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 8th, 2022, Tanya K. Basin, I'm sorry, Basin, was duly elected member, school board, Ward 2, in the city of Norfolk for the term prescribed by law. Witnessed the following official signature and seal of the Electoral Board on this 15th day of November, 2022, and was signed by then Secretary Michael Candelwall of the Norfolk Electoral Board.
I kind of figured we were going in Norfolk order.
Commonwealth of Virginia, City of Norfolk, to all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 8th, 2022, Carlos J. Planton was duly elected member, school board, Ward 3, in the city of Norfolk for the term prescribed by law. Witnessed the following official signature and seal of the Electoral Board on this 15th day of November, 2022, and was signed by Michael Candelwall, then Secretary of Norfolk Electoral Board. Commonwealth of Virginia, City of Norfolk, to all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 8th, 2022, Tiffany R. Moore Buffalo was duly elected member, school board, Ward 4, in the city of Norfolk for the term prescribed by law. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Electoral Board on this 15th day of November, 2022, and was signed by her then-Secretary Michael Candelwall of the Norfolk Electoral Board. Thank you. Commonwealth of Virginia, City of Norfolk, to all to whom these presents shall come, greetings. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Norfolk held in the Circuit Court, and upon examination of the official records deposited therein, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on November 8th, 2022, Lauren D. Campson was duly elected member, school board, Ward 5, in the city of Norfolk for the term prescribed by law. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Electoral Board on this 15th day of November, 2022, and was signed by her then-Secretary Michael Candelwall of the Norfolk Electoral Board. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carrington. This concludes our swearing-in ceremony. We want to thank you all for being here today to honor our honorees. And so right now, we have a nice reception out in the hallway and take some time to, excuse me, take some time to greet our honorees, our newly-elected board members, and just have a good time. And the next meeting is at 10:30. So between now and 10:30, you have time to socialize. Thank you for being here.
Everyone, members of the school board and members of our community, thank you for being here this morning. As you are aware, I will briefly be in a unique position while the school board enters into our governance training, which begins with an organizational meeting at which time the board will officially or formally elect a board chair and a board vice chair. As such, I will be chairing the meeting as the board prepares to make that determination. So at this time, I'll call this meeting to order specifically for the purpose of organizing the roles of school board chair and vice chair for a period of January, not September. January. I'm already into starting school. January 11th, 2023 until December 31st, 2023. So at this time, nominations are now in order. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair. I thought we'd do the roll call after that, which is what we did last time. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair of the school board.
Ms. Moore, breath. I would like to nominate Dr. Adele Martin as for school board chair, please.
Okay, Dr. Adele Martin is nominated. Are there other nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Okay, the motion to close nominations is in order. Do I hear a second? The motion carries, and the floor is closed for nominations. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll, and each member, please state the name of the candidate whom you support for the role of chair of the school board of the city of Norfolk.
Adele Martin.
You didn't hear my name seven times.
Martin.
I already got your...
Martin.
Martin.
Martin. Martin.
Martin.
Thank you. Candidate Adele Martin has seven votes. So congratulations, Dr. Martin, on your selection as the chair of the school board for the city of Norfolk. I'm going to turn the gavel over to you.
Oh, yeah, I got to do that.
Congratulations.
So now, we will open the floor for nominations for the vice chair position.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Noel Gabriel.
Any other nominations?
Dr. Martin, I'd like to nominate Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. Okay, so we'll close nominations, and... Yes, the clerk. I was trying to remember the... Yeah.
Close the nominations.
Yes, save the candidate's name.
I'll second to close the nominations.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Dr. Gabriel.
Gabriel.
Buffalo.
Martin.
Ms. Moore Buffalo. Yes. Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Gabriel.
Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Buffalo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. So next, we have the appointment of the school board clerk. Is there any comments about? Do you have comments about?
Dr. Martin, at this time, I would recommend that Karen Tanner continue in the role as clerk of the school board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to accept the recommendation of the superintendent.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Campson seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the vote.
Basin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Moore Buffalo?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Congratulations, Ms. Tanner. Next, we have the recommendation from Dr. Birdsong on the appointment of the superintendent designee.
Dr. Martin, at this time, I would like to recommend that Dr. James Poe, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Mike Cataldo, Chief Information Officer, serve as my designees.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion of acceptance?
I move that we accept the recommendation brought on behalf of Dr. Birdsong.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clanton seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Tanner, go ahead and please call the vote.
Basin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Moore Buffalo?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that, we will recess until, what time? 11 o'clock, and we will have our school board luncheon. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your patience. So Adele, you're okay with us continuing after you leave, correct? Or you're saying?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, Ms. want to make sure. Okay.
I'm upset about having to miss this really, when I'm anticipating a very good discussion.
Well, at least you get to watch it on the recording, so. I'll let you guys get us started.
Oh, well, yeah, let's go ahead and begin. And thank you, Valda and Inger, for being here.
Absolutely.
Let's see, we have our new board member, Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
I've built in a little welcome. We're gonna do some official welcoming.
She's gonna put you to work getting caught up.
Absolutely.
But you have the floor.
Excellent, thank you. Well, Happy New Year, everybody. We're so glad to be with you and continue this really important work. I can't believe it's already been, I mean, I can't believe it's January, honestly. So, and it'll be June before we know it, so. I did want to officially welcome our new board member because there's a quote from the book, if you remember this on page 77, it says, "Every time a new trustee joins the board, it's a new board. The new trustee may in fact bring a breath of fresh air to the board culture." So, no pressure, but we're looking for their breath of fresh air. And I think this is important, this is an important point to make about, you know, how when one member shifts, one member joins, it shifts the culture. They talk about high-performing teams, right? And what we know is that on that high-performance wheel, it's forming, storming, norming, and performing. And we've been working really hard to get to high performance of this board. And so we don't want to have, because one new member comes, that we go move back into forming or storming, right? So, and I'm glad you've had the opportunity to kind of sit in on many of the meetings and be part of, if not part of the conversation directly, but you've been able to hear it, particularly as we move forward the norms. So today, we're going to spend some time really unpacking those norms and really trying to finalize them. Under normal circumstances, had you not been present for those previous conversations, had you not read the Governance Core, we essentially would be starting from scratch because you can't establish norms without having, you know, all people at the table. So today's conversation, we'll be looking for you to provide some of that input, right? To say, you know, what you're thinking is around the norms that we're going to try to finalize and adopt in today's meeting. So, welcome. What I'd like to do real quickly is allow you to tell the board members what you need from them to be successful in this role.
Oh, okay. Surprise.
Told you we'd put you on the spot already.
You said each board.
Yeah, tell us what you need from us.
Just to be good listeners, communicators, and just... Being a voice, someone to receive if I need to share anything, and just be receptive to that and know everything that I do is out of love. So I just need everyone to help me to acclimate myself as part of this team.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, thank you. And everybody, you know, you just heard what she needs, right? She needs, I'm gonna reiterate, right? Open-mindedness is what I heard, listening ear, right? You all have been in this role. Some of you have been in the role of co-chair before, right? And you've been on this board for some time. So I think it's really important for us to adopt the attitude of how do we support your success, but also how do you benefit from the experience of all the folks that are here already who have been in this work? And so that's what true partnership is. So we're excited to have you be part of this work. As always, I'd like to start us off with the norms that I've brought to the table, but keeping in mind that after today's meeting, if we adopt these, your norms, we will be opening going forward with your norms. But I do want to always ground us in keeping our eyes on the prize, right? Everything that we do, we want to be centered in what's best for Norfolk Public School students. speak your truth, and create space for multiple truths. We've been trying to create this brave space for honesty among this board. And I would say that we've made a lot of progress. I think we've made a lot of progress. I think that the board that you're joining now is not the same board that existed last July. I've seen a lot of growth and so I think that that's, we want to continue in that same momentum. Step up, step back, monetize your privilege, be aware of how much space you take up emotionally and verbally, stay engaged because in this space, we are all equal. We are attempting to really get proximate to the problem. The problems of this board have been around relationships, but it's also, we want to center ourselves in what's best for students and have that be your work. You're gonna find that today, we're gonna spend more time talking about like, you know, goals and really lending itself to the conversation of being about the academic performance of students in Norfolk, right? That's to stay in consistency with our, with the commitment you all made because we are trying to change that narrative, right, around what students are capable of doing, but also the image of the board, right? Of course, this has been, this has been inconvenient and sometimes uncomfortable work, but stay committed and engaged, respect the process, and again, continue to lean in, listen respectfully, and respect confidentiality. And then maintain hope, right, even in the face of brutal facts. We're gonna keep holding space for centering the experiences of those most impacted. And in this respect, I always like us to center the students that are most impacted, right? Students of poverty, students who, you know, who are part of traditionally marginalized populations. We want to always center on what is best for them. That does not mean that we're not meeting the needs of kids who come from affluence or who, you know, who may not be part of a marginalized group, but it means that we're making sure that we're focusing on what each student needs, right, versus the every and all. We're gonna recognize limitations of our own lens. We all have our own biases, right, that create blind spots for us. And we also want to make sure that we embody a posture of curiosity over judgment. So we always come into this work questioning what could be different, what could be better, right? The whole idea of dismantling and rebuilding. I always like to help people remember that disruption is different than dismantling. Dismantling is pulling things apart and putting them back together in a better way, right, being more innovative. People often talk about like, you know, we want to disrupt the systems, right? And I'm like, hmm, there's, there's a better approach to that, right? So I think the work of this board is not to disrupt, but to dismantle systems that we know don't work for all kids and put them together in new and more innovative ways. And so let's do that from, you know, by being curious. Our essential questions are the same ones we've been working with, right? How will you as board members live and advance the Norfolk Public Schools' mission statement? And then what's your responsibility, both personally and professionally, to dismantle, as I just said, reimagine and rebuild the policies and practices that meet the needs of each Norfolk Public School students? I love the idea of dismantling and reimagining. I feel like there's a lot of power in that, right? I think like when people tend to go in with a posture of disruption, there's not really a plan for what happens after that. Like, I don't know if you guys watched the 15 rounds of the Kevin McCarthy, right, trying to become speaker? That, that was, that was derailing and that was disrupting. It wasn't about dismantling, right? And you see how chaotic it felt and it still, it took all that time just to get to the same end result. And so there's a lot of wheel spinning that comes with, with being just a disruptor, right? Whereas dismantling, I feel like is so much more intention and you have a plan, right? And so you're saying, I'm gonna dismantle this existing system because it does not work for us, but here's how we're gonna get to where we want to be. That was lacking in that whole process, right? And I want you guys as board members to think about what are the systems that we need to dismantle, that don't work for us, that don't serve all kids, that don't meet the needs of our family? How do we reimagine those and then rebuild the policies and the practices to get us where we want to be, right? Because that's, that's essentially the work of a board. So I always like to frame us in that because that's, that's the big, that's the big challenge. That's the BHAG, the Big Hairy Audacious Goal, is that we get to a place where there's a clear through line in what we're doing, right? Like the decisions that are made here at the board level, they make their way into the instructional corps. There's, there's a clear, we can say, we as a board did this and here's how it impacts students in the classroom, right? That's the ideal. That's the aha state of a board, is that you can see that work. And that's where we've been trying to get us, right? So we just invite you to continue to lean into that. So for today, we're gonna continue to build relationship because I think that's a big part of, especially because we have a new member now. And so we've built in some activities that we're gonna think about how, you know, we can continue to advance and build the trust, the relationship that needs to happen with you all. Everybody took the Strength Finders assessment?
Yes.
And you brought your reports with you?
Yes.
Are you have your results? Excellent, excellent. You can pull them up? Okay, great. Because that's, that's gonna be, we're gonna kind of do an activity where we're gonna ground this trust building in who we are as individuals and the strengths that we bring. I think we've been in a, we've been operating from a what's wrong with each other, right, kind of framing, right? And we're moving away from that to a strength-based approach. What are my strengths, right? How do my strengths capitalize with your strengths to make us this high-performing team that we espouse ourselves to want to be? So we're gonna focus on that. We're gonna adopt the norms and protocols. Part of your over-the-break homework was to go through the revised draft and to come with any edits because I want us to finalize those norms and think about the next steps in order to make those norms move forward. But my hope is that we will actually adopt, formally adopt, the norms in today's meeting. Okay, and then we're going to talk about coherence because I asked you guys to read as your homework was the PELP coherence framework. We're gonna unpack that a little bit too because that's kind of creates the mental model for how we think about strategy management, strategy monitoring, all the things that the board is supposed to do. So we're gonna talk about that. And then I have a process that I want to share with you all for how we're going to take the strategic plan goals and run it through the logic model with each of the areas of PELP. And so we'll get through, we're gonna model that with one or two of the strategic plan initiatives. But my hope is that at each meeting, we can then take one of those initiatives and do the same thing, run it through the logic model, think about what data we need to be looking at, thinking about like what needs to happen for the board to be focused on advancing the strategic plan goals. So we'll, we'll walk through that. And then we're gonna talk about what the next steps are that we have, right? Because there's some things we need to be thinking about. For example, board priorities need to be established, right? And that's gonna be based on the data and based on the strategic plan. But again, they're not, they're not current on the website. Last I checked, I haven't, I didn't check like in the past week. But so that's, that's an important next step. And then we're gonna also work on, you know, developing a theory of action. So the two things that I think that should be public facing on your website, on the board's website, would be the board's theory of action as well as the board priorities. And we'll get there. It may not happen in today's meeting, but we'll get there as we have conversations around the strategic plan, around the data, around the things that we know need to happen as next steps. But that's, that's where we're working towards. And as always, you're a community of practice, right? I'd like to remind us that the answers are always already in the room. Inger and I's job is to facilitate those discussions, right? But as a community of practice, we want to make sure that, you know, we keep our interactions, you know, centered on what's going to be the work that this board does to advance the common concern, right? The common concern being student achievement for each student in Norfolk Public Schools and that you all become this high-performing board that really is able to address the needs of students, staff, and families. All right, community builder, turn over to you.
All right, so again, hello and welcome, everyone. Welcome to 2023. Welcome to a new community because that's essentially what you have now. And earlier in the week, I was talking to a colleague and we were, she's also in education as well. And one of the things that she said is that the culture and environment is the second teacher. The culture and environment is the second teacher. And what defines a community, of course, is what? Their culture and the environment. And so where you all are now is at a place where you're building this new community. You're building a new community with a member who is familiar with what you do, but that's seeing it from the outside. But now actually being a part of that means that that whole idea around trust and relationship building has to be reestablished with new membership. So I wanted to really help you all understand, better understand, because some people already know what it is, what a community builder is and why. And Valda is probably like, Inger, no, not community. But I believe in building community because it strengthens relationships. It's the things that we do that are low risk because we don't want people to get anxious or anything about their opportunity to be vulnerable and share relationships. But it's how we build trust and how we build collegiality within a group of individuals who are working towards the same thing. Everybody here is working towards the same goal. And so it's important to acknowledge that in order for us to do that, it has to be a constant reminder of how do we connect? Community building, how do we connect? Relationship building, how do we connect? Trust building? All of those things go into this process. So what we're gonna do is give you an opportunity to connect in a different way. So this community builder, this time together, will give you a chance to just share a couple of things about yourself. Again, it's kind of low risk, so we're not, we're not digging too deep. But you're gonna take a moment to think about what's one of the most influential media pieces that you've seen. It could be a book, it could be a song, a film that you've seen recently, or podcasts that you've listened to. And then think about where's home to you? Some people may feel like, you know what, I've been in this area for X number of years. I'm originally from right across the dismal swamp in Elizabeth City, North Carolina. I live in Maryland and have been there for over 30 years, but Elizabeth City is still home for me. I don't know why. Whenever somebody says, are you going home? I'm like, yep, to Elizabeth City. But that's just home for me. And then think about, especially in this group, who's your model? Who do you look up to? Could be someone that you know that is within this room. It could be someone that you're related to. It could be someone that you don't know, but you would like to know, but you see certain characteristics in that person that make you say, you know what? They are someone that I aspire to be, or there are characteristics about that, that person that I aspire. And then what drives, what are some of the things that drive your passion for this work? So what drives your passion? Why are you here as a board member? What's driving that? So you're gonna introduce yourself and you can start in any one of the quadrants. I'll give you some time to think about it. You can jot it down. We'll leave the slide up. And then we want to hear from you. So take about five minutes.
They're picking one?
They can go through all of them, but if there's one that really stands out for you, that's the one that we want to hear. Not a minute each.
Mr. Jordan has.
Just clarification on the first quadrant. Did you say the book song is something recent or just something?
Anything. It's just an influential one.
Okay. Are we starting?
We'll give the people, give people just a few minutes to think about it. Yep. Anybody ready?
That quick?
You were still writing. Take another two minutes and then we'll hear what some of your thoughts are. All right, we're gonna start alphabetical by first name. I see you looking around, Dr. Martin, like, is that me? Is that me? Yes, that's you.
Okay, the first book that came to mind that's influential, although I listen to a lot of podcasts these days, but I would have to say Bowling Alone by Robert Putnam. It, when I read that book, it just, it was like someone gets it. Like they, the role of social capital and it's actually written about the downfall of, you know, social capital in society. And then that sparked my interest in, for my dissertation. So and then actually, I invited him here when he wrote his book, Our Kids. And Noel and I had dinner with he and his wife, Rosemary, and it was just one of those like, you know, starstruck. Yeah, fangirl experiences. And so, yeah, that was very validating and it, you know, it was great. It's very influential to me. The home thing, I know I'm gonna get in trouble if my husband watches this, is that while this is my home and I'm very dedicated to this area, when I go home, it's Akron, Ohio. That's where my family is. And, yeah. So my, what drives my passion for this work has to be my, my vision. I have this vision in my mind that Norfolk Public School District is a high-performing district where students who are graduates have fond memories of their experiences here, where, you know, adults want to flock here to, to either work or support our schools or be a part of this great, wonderful community, and that's what we're known for. And then I would say my role model would be, the two women who stand out in my life are my grandmother, who's 88 now, Ms. Janet Jackson is her name. And, yeah. And, and her, and her best friend, Mary, my Aunt Mary, we call her Aunt Mary, and Hildebrand. And the work that they, and also my grandfather, did in Akron Public Schools. And I was just, just growing up, hearing the stories about the newspaper drives and how they volunteered their time to make sure, there's a lot of unrest in the late 60s and how they would, Mary actually was the president of the Akron PTA and my grandmother was the vice president. And they would travel all over the state trying to bring resources and resolve the conflicts that were going on. And they patrolled the school, the school to make sure that all the kids were in the classrooms and no one was hanging out outside, you know, everyone was where they needed to be on time. And, and just hearing just all of, like, you know, when you're little, you're like, you old ladies did that. But, you know, just the impact that they continue to have and the involvement they continue to have in the, in the schools there, it's just really always, obviously left an impression on me.
Yeah, cool. That's what, that's the, kind of that whole idea around the immortality of influence, how people influence you in so many different ways. So thank you. Dr. Bertone? Wait, is she next?
No, I thought it was last.
I thought it was first name. That was just to get us started. That was really just to get us started, but we can go back to that. I'm fine with that.
Who's next?
See, I learned that in Norfolk schools.
Please, dummy.
Okay, so the influential book, um, it's kind of a thing, but honestly, I went back to a book. It's kind of like when I got my first start in my professional career and it was Who Moved My Cheese? By Dr. Spencer Johnson and, which was really cool at an early age, adapting to change, you know, both in life and work. And so constantly being able to, to, how do you approach that? And how do you move forward that? So it's kind of been my mantra, learning from that, being that, that person. It's like, okay, all right, you know, change, how do you keep it moving as long as you're staying focused? So that kind of jumps into what drives your passion for this work. And that is the ability to know that I was a student in this division, from this community, and knowing that I'm in a position to be able to positively make an impact, very much like the individual teachers that did for me. very much like the individual teachers that did for me, and changing the trajectory of my life, and exposure, and that I have the opportunity to try to do that for so many others. And to do that in an impactful way, and working with our superintendent and colleagues to do that. So, that's what drives me. How can we push to create change that can just change the whole trajectory of how we do public education? And to open the eyes and the opportunities for so many students. So, where's home? Of course, right here, Norfolk, Virginia, seven-five-seven, Park Place, LP. Laramie-Spoyle. Well, you know, so, those are, I mean, this is home. This has been home for me, been a lot of places. But Hampton Road, Norfolk always has a special place. Role model is kind of hard, but I will say that now, kind of more in my professional life, the two gentlemen who come to mind that I had an opportunity to work with when I was president of the National Urban League of Professionals, and that was President Mark Moriel. And both of them are fraternity brothers of mine. And the other one is Don Cravens, who was ahead of our policy, but now, he's the first undersecretary for our new minority division. And both of these gentlemen, from their leadership, to how they impacted change, their career pathways, and the different roles that they were in, have always been an inspiration. And they're people that I consistently have an opportunity to communicate with, and they serve as an inspiration and kind of drive to keep going.
Excellent. Thank you. I love learning more about you all, because it's always those things that help you connect. All right, who's next? Is it, over here?
Elle?
Okay.
We're an Elle?
My Elle is always. The most influential book that I can think of that really guided some of the stuff I did in my work, I can't remember the title, but it was Doug Reeves, one of Doug Reeves' books.
Can't go wrong with Doug Reeves, so.
And I was, I spent the whole trip, air trip from Denver to back home after attending one of his things, when he worked a lot with our school district. And I was in, it was year four, which was five years before the SOL started. I was, I went in second year as a principal. And we were one of the lowest, lowest five schools in our district when the SOLs came out. And our district was in the toilet, so you can imagine how low Ocean View was at that time. And so, I was trying to step back and see what we were doing wrong, and what we could do. And, but I kind of just stayed with the same pattern that we had had in our building for the first year. And then, I started going to his training. And I can remember it, after year three, when we did, I went in and I just changed so much, because sometimes, that's, I mean, you can't just keep doing the same little thing. And we made changes, and we got rid of committees, and we just did data, vertical and horizontal stuff. And we started having Saturday data, I mean, checking, creating our own little test that we would give each month. And we just did all these different things. And we, and I made, and I made a notebook for every single teacher.
You dismantled, then you rebuilt, it sounds like, right?
Yeah. So, anyway, so I'm reading his new book as I'm flying home, trying to think, what am I gonna do? Because it was, it was year three for me. Usually, about three years, you can turn a school around. I think we found out that's not necessarily true. Certainly wasn't at Ocean View, because we were flat. I was out, out on the playground, it was field day, and I got a thing to come in, because back then, they just, the state just dropped all your data. You know, nothing was secret, everything was boom, it was out there. And I'm trying to get it by grade level, and to teach, and realizing that we were flat. After all those, even the notebooks I gave them. And so, I'm reading it, and I'm thinking, what, what he told me, what I learned from that was, you can have all the data in the world, but you have to, you have to use it. And that was the piece that was missing, which RTI actually fulfilled for us later. But, finding that out, and coming back, and putting those things into what we were doing. We had already created our notebooks, we already, we'd already made up our little assessment tests and all, but we were flat, flat, flat. And once we implemented it, the next year, we had like twenty points up. All kinds of things, just, everyone knew how to do it, we just weren't doing it. And it changed the way I looked at education, I looked at how to teach my children, how to track to make sure I would catch anyone that fell overboard. I mean, it just, everything just, in one year. And that was all the inspiration from his, you know, sessions that he did to train us, but also for coming in and explaining stuff. It was, anyway, I don't want to talk too long, again. But, that's, that's why that book was so influential. I'll, if I didn't already, I think I threw so much of my educational stuff when I moved back in January, but I will let y'all know what that book is, if you wanted to get into that. And I learned to just tack it on to what he did in the RTI that I was so known for. And it changed everything. Role model is hard for me, for a while, but as I thought about it, I realized there was a principal that was very influential in my life that was before Ocean View. And we opened Gant, was when we were opening Gant School, and was totally different from everything. It was, now they, you know, put stuff to create walls again, but before, it was wide open, did these big communities. Everything she did was different. The fourth through fifth graders would be, would come into their little grade level area, but then, they would split up depending on where they were and the extra help they needed. It was just different from anything I'd seen before. And I learned that, and that was something I could go back to when I was reading Doug Reeves, is, you have to take that jump in, you have to do something different, because it ain't gonna change if you don't. And so, that was Bonnie Bill. She's a retired principal now, but she was probably my biggest role model for what I do.
The reimagining.
Yeah. Home, what can I say? East Beach, Norfolk, Virginia. Ta-da! Since, since, since the third year of college, I've been here. I used to live across the river in Yorktown, but then, I was here. And Yorktown's been so far in my past, you know.
What about Carolina?
What?
You can't forget about Carolina.
Oh, no one can, never forget Carolina. But I left Carolina when I was seven. But I did go back to stay with my grandmother every summer, until I was twelve.
You're still a grit.
And, what was the last one?
The drive of passion.
Oh, well, it's easy, my passion's children. That's where I get the extra that I talked about, is the children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's next? Who's next?
It's me. My role models are my parents, my mom, my dad. My mom's in heaven right now. She passed away before I came onto the school board. But, I can say, now, as a parent, and thinking back on everything that they taught me, my home was filled with a lot of love and sacrifice. And I appreciate that now, as a parent, parenting my own children, and seeing what they are going through. And I try to think about that as a role that I serve as a board member. Start everything with love of what you do, and try to go from there. So, those are my role models. My home is in Norfolk, Virginia. This is where I was born. Been my home. The most influential book, I would have to say, at this point in time in my life, is probably the Bible.
I knew it.
Oh, I have one of these right here, if you'd like to borrow it for the rest of the meeting.
It's kind of like, one of those books where you read it at one age, or you read excerpts, and it means different things at different times in your life. But, again, now going through this as a parent with a lot of different other responsibilities, you interpret the meanings that it has, that the scriptures have, in a different light. And you try to think of it from almost like an omnipresent sort of perspective. And it, it really has, for me, it has the answers to a lot of things. Like, for example, I remember I got into this Marie Kondo kick about trying to tidy up the house and everything. And then, we go to church, and one of the gospel readings is about, you know, Jesus saying, "You don't need all these treasures," you know? "You just need, you know, to believe," you know? And, and that was it. And I was like, man, I should have just gone back and read that passage. It was here all along.
They're always speaking to you.
Yes.
Every time.
So, so I would say that that probably is a book that is influencing me probably the most at this time. I really didn't have a lot of time to read a lot of other, like, luxury reading, because I'm always reading medical texts on my patients. So, you know, that is my, that is probably my go-to. And then, what drives my passion? It is kids. I knew at third grade, I wanted to be a pediatrician. I knew I always wanted to work with kids. And I think that my drive, this like internal sort of sense that I have in my, my inner being, my philosophy, is driven to, number one, help others, but specifically for children. Because they are our future, and they are gonna be the ones that leave the legacy. They are our legacy. And if we can do right by them, then we know that this world will be in a better place than we found it. So, that's my passion.
Thank you. Awesome.
All right, I think I'm up. That's right, are? Think so. Well, I started off thinking we had to do one, but I feel like we can do a little jazz here. So, our influential book, I wrote down many, but I kind of thought back to Junior High School. So, one, one is Miseducation of the Negro by Carter G. Woodson, who many, hope everybody knows is the father of Negro History Week, and what we now know as Black History Month. But in the book, he was examining what role does education play? This was, I guess he wrote it back in the nineteen thirties, I think? So, that, that book was one of the first books that I think that kind of impacted me in terms of academic excellence and achievement, and really individualized learning. How do you appreciate education and its roles for, and its role impacting individuals based upon their experiences and circumstances? And how are you, how do we, as a educational system, address those, those needs? So, that was one. I think Jesus and the Disinherited by Howard Thurman is another. So, as Dr. Gabriel was mentioning, the Bible, Jesus and the Disinherited, Howard Thurman was a theologian, I think, opened one of, if not the first, but definitely in California, the first what we call interracial church in, in the country. But he was considered to be the spiritual godfather of civil rights movement. And in Jesus and the Disinherited, he asked the question, "What does the message of Jesus mean to those whose backs are against the wall?" So, when we talk about dismantling, and who we're impacting, I think of things in that context. And then, I'd also written, you know, Dr. King's Letter from a Birmingham Jail. Home, home is Norfolk, but home is also the home where I grew up, which is in Virginia Beach. So, that's, that's home. Park Place is home, and Green Pine Lane is home. Role models, I have many. I originally wrote down Ed Haywood, who used to be on our board. I wrote down my father. Wrote down my Aunt Anna. But then, I decided on the founding members of Lambda Gamma Omega Chapter of Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority in Virginia Beach, where my mother and my Anna were founding members. And growing up, a lot of the meetings were at our house, or in our backyard. But, watching them and their service to education, and I just, being exposed there, just really gave me a sense that you could just do anything, as I watched them do what they, what they did, outside of singing the song. And, I'm just teasing. And then, what drives my passion? Generational advancement. Seeing the progress of, you know, it's, at least in my family, the, the objective is you're supposed to leave things better than you found it. And so, we were talking a little bit over lunch, and, you know, I just think about the progression from my, well, at least on one side, the family, great-grandmother, the grandmother, to mother, to me, who kind of screwed it up. And now, hopefully, seeing my daughters and my grandson have it better than, than I had it. So, that, that, that really drives me. And also, in the context of dismantling barriers, and then rebuilding systems that, hopefully, using my, what I call my grandson, Josiah. I don't want Josiah to have to go through the same thing that his mother Paige did, who went through the same, some of the same things that I went through. I want to see that changed. I think I hit them all.
Thank you.
I think it's interesting, two things resonate for me. One, to leave things better than you found them. That's like a Valburn family mantra. Like, my parents were very big on that. My mother used to always say, from the simplest things to the largest things, if you've touched it, then you need to leave it better. And that's always stayed with me. And then, the other thing that you mentioned is that changing conditions for your grandson. The one thing that we know about education is that, like, it's the one thing that hasn't changed. Like, think about, like, think about, like, from the inception of when school started, it still looks the same. Like, you know what I mean? Like, everything, like, all the technology advances. And so, that does speak to the power you have as a board, right? Because we've, we've systemically not changed what school looks like. And there's so much power in that idea of being innovative, right? And thinking about, how do we shift those conditions? So, that's like a perfect way to kind of think about, like, how do we make sure that our grandkids don't have the same experiences that we had, right? Love that.
Yeah. Thank you. And the power of family. You, almost everyone has talked about a family connection and the influence of family. So, think about that from the student's perspective. And how many of our students are impacted and influenced by their families? Yeah. All right. Two more, real quick. Okay.
Okay, so I think I'm next.
Our S-T, S-T.
Oh, S.
Well, speaking of family, I'll start with my role models. My role models are definitely my parents. My father is no longer living. He died long ago, at a very early age, at forty-three. And I miss him every single day. But he had a tremendous impact on my life. Everyone in my family says that I am my, my father's daughter. So, you know, my mom reminds me of that often. So, yeah, so I can imagine when she's upset, "That's just like your dad," blah, blah, blah. But definitely, they, they are my role models. My parents worked very, very hard. And they were very proud that they educated four kids. And they provided a good home. They provided us access to a lot, and it's because they worked hard. It was all about hard work. My mom, they were very different. My mom was very kind of calm, and was kind of the reasonable person in the house that you could go to and, and talk to about anything. And my father was, you know, all about social justice. I mean, he spent some time in jail for marching, for civil rights, and all kinds of things. But definitely, an activist, and very, very involved in what he felt like doing the right thing for, for his people, he would say. And so, there's some history there in Wilmington with the Wilmington Ten. I won't go into all of that, but, yeah, my dad knows a lot about that. And so, there were a lot of things that I was exposed to very young that I got to see myself, like, history in the making. And I'm not going to go into all of that. But again, they are definitely my role models. And if I'm half the parent that they were to us, then I'm very proud of what we've done with our children. So, they were my role models. But I also had another role model, my kindergarten teacher, Margaret Brown. And Ms. Brown was probably one of two or three Brown teachers in our whole school. I just remember going to, you know, kindergarten, first day of school. There weren't a lot of children who looked like me, and definitely not a lot of teachers. And the principal, I remember this well. The principal did not welcome my parents into the school with, with open arms. I'll never forget that. And they, they knew that, and they talked about it at dinner. But that did not keep my mom from joining the PTA, and for being active, from being active in the school. So, she was dead. at dinner, but that did not keep my mom from joining the PTA and for being active, from being active in the school. So she was de- definitely there and very visible. And I think because now that I'm older, I can better understand some things that went on during that time. I, I just remember, um, Ms. Brown allowing me to do a lot of things that maybe perhaps other children didn't get the opportunity to do. One thing that my parents did, they made sure that we could all read. Like, by the time we were like three, we were like reading. And so in kindergarten, every day after lunch, I got to read to the class because nobody else knew how to read, but I knew how to read. And so I got to read to the class and she would, she would make me feel special. She would tell me, you can do anything you want, want to do. And I'll never forget that. I'll never forget that. So she was definitely a role model and influenced me in, in being an educator as well.
Living?
She's not. She's not. She's not. And so, um, home would be Wilmington, North Carolina for, for me. That's where I was born and raised. I'm a Carolina girl, Magritte. Girls raised in the South. I own it. I own it. I love it. And yeah, and I miss it. I don't get to go home very often. My mom reminds me of that all the time. So she might be watching, hi, Mom, I'll be home soon. Um, but yes, Wilmington is definitely home for me. That's where I, I feel most at home is, is in Wilmington, um, North Carolina. Um, born and raised, my mom still lives in the same house that they built. We were the only family that lived in that house. She still lives in that house. And so lots of wonderful, wonderful memories in Wilmington. And that's why it feels so much like home to me. Um, what drives my passion for the work? Um, let me talk about the book first. One of the books, and this is a professional reading. Mike Schmoker is one of my favorite authors. Um, so he wrote, as you probably already know, Focus, and he wrote a second edition to that. So when I was kind of piggybacking on, uh, Lauren's story, I'm reminded of being a brand new principal at Isaiah Gardens Middle School. And just, just, there was so much that had to be done. In addition to student achievement, there were so many other things that, that had to be a focus, you know, that I thought, you know, going in as a, as a brand new principal. But after reading that book, I quickly learned that I would not be able to do everything overnight. Um, and I thought I could. I mean, you really go in thinking, I'm gonna change the world and it's gonna be wonderful and great. And it doesn't happen that way. So I, I quickly learned how to focus on the focus. And so I, we had to come together. I had to be very strategic. We had to talk about what our priorities were, set goals, and then move forward to achieving those goals. And I think, um, we also did a book study on that book at the school. And so everybody was on the same page. What, you know, this is what we need to do. We're all on board, you know, make changes along the way. But again, all about the children, academic achievement. And so he, we had an opportunity to invite him this summer to our leadership conference. So he, he came. I was like, oh, I get to meet a new person. And so he did, um, um, he provided professional development for, um, my building principals and central office staff. And it was just really good. And, um, and speaking of Strength Finders, that used to be, it's interesting. I took it before and, you know, lots of changes with my, my top five. But Focus used to be one of mine. It didn't appear this time. So it was kind of interesting. So, yeah, it was a bit interesting, but definitely a, a very good read. And so what drives my passion for this work? Um, it's all about, it's about the children. It truly is and, and making a difference. And I know what education has done for me in my life and my siblings and, um, family members. And we have that opportunity to provide a, a high-quality education for the children in Norfolk. And they can, they'll be able to do anything that they want to do. And, and that drives me each and every day. I also think about access and opportunities and options. Um, it, it was my experience just about my whole life. I was probably one, the only African-American child in my, all of my classes or one of two. And, and it, again, because my parents pushed for, you know, she will be tested, you know, and if she's gifted, she will be in these classes. And it was just, it was a struggle just to get those options provided to all. And I, I knew that there were other children who were brilliant, but maybe because they didn't lack that, you know, parental support at that time, different factors, um, of course, for every different, for, for families, but just didn't have options and opportunities. And that's what I have to do. I have to make sure that all kids have options and opportunities so they can achieve whatever they want to achieve in their lives.
Wow. This is powerful. Yep. And then Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Right. Um, so I guess I'll start with a book. Um, with, so one of the books that I found very influential and inspiring to me was a book called, um, My Own Country by Abraham Vergasi. Um, it was a book by a physician. He's a physician author who wrote about the HIV/AIDS epidemic before it was known to be, you know, um, before it was known to be that in Tennessee. And what inspired me about it was I was just starting, uh, my master's program, Public Health, then, and just the, just the nuances of one, you know, the bewilderment of, you know, the symptoms that were presenting among the patients that were coming into the hospital and wondering and trying to figure out, you know, what was going on, what was happening. And it just, it just, the, the emotion, the compassion, the, eh, the drive to figure out, you know, what, what was happening, just wrapped up in this, um, it was a memoir, you know, of, of that time. Um, was really inspiring to me and at a time when, you know, I knew I wanted to go in the public health route, but was also struggling with a lifelong, uh, of being brainwashed into going into medicine by, you know, my parents were like, you're, you're going to be a doctor. And so it just really honed in, like, the importance of public health and the role that that plays in, um, in medicine, just in general. So it really informed the path I would take professionally. And just in a, in a lot of, uh, different, uh, ways. And that book just really, um, if you haven't read it, I would read it. Um, it's a great book. He's a great writer. Um, he's written other books too that are fantastic. But, um, anyway, that was an influential book in my, in my like, in my life, in my profession and, and all of that. Um, Where Is Home? That's a complicated, uh, piece for me. Um, because, you know, I hear comments like, you know, home is a place I love or a place, you know, you feel really connected to or something. You know, I've lived here for sixteen years. I had someone earlier at our swearing in say, oh, are you from here? You know, you know, how long have you? And I've lived here for sixteen years and, you know, I'll be, um, I'll be honest, it doesn't feel like home yet to me. Um, you know, we've talked about, I've been involved with the school system for, long before I was on the school board. Been part of the mission of it being a proudly diverse community. And I think we're a long way from there. It doesn't feel like that. Um, as an Indian American, it doesn't feel like that. It doesn't feel like home to me here. Um, and I don't know that we will stay here, um, for, beyond when my children are out of Norfolk Public Schools. Um, because it doesn't feel that to me. And so when I think about, I also think about where places that have had impacts on me, just in life, I think of my time in Atlanta, which is where we lived before I moved here, where I have my kids. That to me is, is a big, you know, emotional connection. And then I think, you know, where I grew up, but then I think, you know, and I've been thinking a lot about this because my parents are, are elder, you know, are getting older. I'm in that place of being sandwiched between teenagers who are, you know, going to college and also having elderly parents that need my attention too. And being an immigrant family and having spent lots of time in India as well, and my parents wanting to be there. And so, and we spent a lot of time there. And having, right now, lots of conversations with my dad about wanting to go there, um, as he's, his health is not doing great. And I've been thinking a lot about the times that we've spent there and the connection with, I have lots of family there. And when you talk about that connection with family, I, I feel like I almost have a stronger connection there, even though I'm here every day, but it's that, that sense of connection um, there as well. So home is complicated. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it there. Um, but I want to say as part of what drives my passion for this work, the piece about embracing diversity is part of what drives my work. And in a city that is diverse, I think that there's room for improvement in how we embrace that diversity. But I'll get back for a more complete answer on that too. Role model, you know, there, there are many, but I also, again, I guess because I've been very reflective on my parents too and having a lot of emotion there. Um, you know, my dad likes to remind me, he came here with six dollars in his pocket.
I have a similar story.
You know? Um, even though I was a trained physician, had to start basically from the beginning in an ink factory and then working in a florist and just, uh, just starting from the beginning. And, um, and the things that my parents prioritized along the way, you know, to build that, like you said, a generational advancement um, for my sister and I, and then what we are trying to build, you know, as the first generation for our kids and the priority that they placed for us on education. Um, the value that they placed on education eh, for us and what we are doing for our children, you know, that's, that's also what drives my passion for this work. Um, but when I think of role models, I think, you know, we look at role models in various ways, whether it's love, whether it's, you know, and that, that's very complicated when you talk about parents sometimes. And I think that's true of our, of the students that we serve. You know, we talk about parents, it, it can be very complicated and families are very complicated and families mean different things to different people. Um, so, so I'll leave, I'll leave that there. What drives my passion is, I feel like we know, like, I think a little bit to your point, I think we know the why, like why we are where we are. And what drives, and for me, and it's also reflected in my results, is I always want to know the why. Like, the analytical piece is one of my, is like, I want to know why it's happening. It's in my professional, you know, has been, you know, the core of some of the, the professional work I've done. It's the core of like, when I'm looking at data, I want to know why. And, and if I know why, I want to know, now what are we going to do about it?
And curiosity is what drives innovation.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I think, like you said, school has been how it's been. It's been the exact same. We could talk about our experiences, whether, whether we're, you know, despite our age, you know, we have age diversity on our board, but yeah, you know, school
It's still school.
could look very similar. Um, and it's, it would even look very similar, uh, for Mr. Jordan's grandson if he were, you know, it's, it's just, it's very similar. And, and we know why there are discrepancies. We know why, uh, or disparities. And now it's, what drives me is let's do something. It's time for action. It's time for innovation. And so that's what drives me. So, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. And, and I know that we're, we're running short on time, but I do want to make sure we give Ms. Moore Buffalo, but I hope as you're hearing these conversations, you are seeing each other differently. And you're seeing how people bring these different strengths and these different experiences to everything that you are hearing and seeing and doing as part of this, this board work. So.
These are all the things that show, that show up in the way you show up, right? They influence the way you show up. So, yeah.
Well, influential books, song, film, or podcast. Um, when I was, uh, working at the middle school level, uh, years ago here in Norfolk, um, we had a faculty reading, uh, Failure is Not an Option by Alex Blinstein. And it talked about the six principles for making student success the only option. And so sitting in a support role, I always wondered what, how would I do impact student success? I'm not a classroom teacher. I'm not the principal. I'm not the AP, but I have a part in this work. And so just understanding my role and how I can impact children and what I do daily, you know, and families, our community. Where is home? Uh, I grew up on the South Side of Chicago. I am a South Side Chicago girl. Uh, moved here as a teenager, attended Granby and Norview High School. Those, that's where my roots are, you know, praying, playing double dutch, fire hydrant, just, I remember a strong sense of community. Um, schooling, um, I went to predominantly black schools with teachers that looked like me. So I got a very uh, firm foundation of who I was and, and everything. So, uh, Chicago is definitely home. But I've been here since I was, what, fifteen? That's, I'm not telling my age, but it was a long time ago. Um, so yes, I consider them both home, but I definitely got the foundation of who I am. Um, um, in Chicago. Role models. Oh, I have many, from teachers to clergy, to people I served with in ministry, to, you know, uh, women I've served with in sorority, because one common thing, they're all community-minded. And they love people. And I love people. I love the diversity in people. And so my role models, um, are examples of that. So from teachers, um, you know, leaders that I work with and many, I could say. And that's what draws, draws me to that because I'm community-minded, people-minded. And so, um, I could go on about role models. Um, what drives my passion for this work? Um, I think it's been said several times, children and how the work we do impacts that. I think you said, when you can see your work and how it trickles down. And, um, policymaking and making sure that, um, everyone gets what they need, whether it's instruction, um, going into a safe and secure building, um, policies around personnel that we retain and hire the best of the best to teach our children. So that was drives me is what I do here and how it's going to possibly impact what we, what we're doing for our children.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna hop in because I feel like in the spirit of, of transparency that we should also share. So we're gonna pick one because we, because we're running out of time. So you're gonna pick, think of your one. I'm gonna do role models. Um, just because there's so many, there's so many similarities and experiences that I heard from, as you guys were sharing. I don't know if you know this, I'm the child of immigrants. Uh, my parents are from Haiti. I'm the only one of my siblings, six siblings born in this country. And it, as I was listening to Mr. Jordan talk, I was like, oh my God, he sounds like my mother, because my mother would always say, you know, that they, I, I recognize that I said on the sacrifices of, of, you know, of my family, right? And so she would always say, we didn't come to this country for you not to, to experience all the things that you're not supposed to offer. And so if you've been there, if you've touched it, leave it better. And so that resonated for me. I also think about, you know, both my parents are deceased, but, you know, I feel like I am there. You know that saying, the teacher, your, your ancestor's wildest dreams? I feel like my siblings and I are their wildest dreams, right? Like we, you know, they were able to put us all through college and everybody is doing the damn thing, right? Whatever that thing is. Uh, and so I often think about, if I didn't have them as parents, would I be sitting here today in front of you, right? Would I, would I have had the experiences that I've had? And so, um, so I think that, that's, that's very much shapes who I am and how I show up to this work. Having been the only child of color for most of my Catholic school upbringing, uh, like sitting on the, on the receiving end of a lack of cultural competence, the inexperience of the educators that worked with me around diversity, equity, and inclusion and ways to create belonging in those classrooms. All of that is why we do the equity work now, right? Because I think back to my experience and I say, I want to work with boards and principals and school districts that are trying to change those conditions. I don't want any kid to have that same story. You know, when they're fifty-something and they're able to think back, you know, to their experience. And so I think all those things shape the vow that you guys get to experience once a month because those are all the impacts, you know, that, that shaped my, my K-12 experience that I really, I ground myself in when we work with districts around how they can change those conditions. So.
Inger?
All right. So I'm gonna lean into the role model piece too and think about my family on both my mother's side and, and on my father's side. On my father's side, I grew up with great-grandparents. A lot of people did not have that opportunity. My great-grandparents were very influential because they did not have a lot at all. I mean, I remember going to visit them in Williamson, North Carolina. I remember going to visit them in Williamston, North Carolina. They did not have indoor plumbing. So, I was like, okay, we got to go back there again, but I'm okay. We're going, you know, I'm going to be a champion. I'm going to go. But even without that, it did not matter because they created the kind of memories and shared the kind of love that made me want to go back and sit with them and visit. My great-grandfather's brothers started their own school. He was a very handsome man, very handsome, and just kind of quiet and stoic, but had so much history behind him and love for his family, love for his family, and always, always with a smile. And I say that because there were a lot of things that he didn't necessarily have to smile about because, again, they were not rich. But they put kids through college, my grandmother and my aunt. You know, some of them had the opportunity to go to college back in the 40s. And that, for me, was just like, I can't believe that you've had these opportunities. And in addition to that, again, on my father's side, my cousin was supposed to be the valedictorian of his class. That year, they did not have a valedictorian at his school because they did not want a black man, a black student, to be valedictorian. Even though he went on, graduated from Colgate, graduated from Stanford Law, he was still, even to, we had this conversation last year, he still remembers the pain of that. And I, again, don't want anybody to feel that pain, either of my boys or any child. On my mom's side, they were activists. My mom, bless her heart, she's deceased, but she was only about five feet tall, but she was, I used to call her fierce and feisty because she did not play. And one of the things that, again, I loved about my mom's side of the family is that her mother was not given the opportunity to vote because in North Carolina, you had to be able to read the preamble and to write the preamble. She couldn't do either. She did not let that interfere with her being able to vote. She was able to change the voting laws in North Carolina in a case. It's Bazemore versus a state, I think.
You're related to the Bazemores?
Yes.
I know them in Williamston. Yeah, we'll talk later.
Yes, yep. She was able to change voting laws, even though, and think about this, she could not read well, she could not write the preamble, but that did not stop her. And I think about all you all have said about children and being resilient and persevering. That's the kind of family that has shaped me. And so, when people say, Inger, you can't do that, I'm like, oh, that's all I needed. You did the call. That was the call. I'm going to do it. I'm going to make it happen. And so, we've got kids and families, when they hear those things, they're like, okay, I'm going to do it. I'm going to make it happen. And we all have to have that in spite of everything, I'm going to make it happen attitude with this group. In spite of all the things that have been going on, you're going to make it happen. So, I'll leave you with that.
So, a hand up, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
He had an action to make?
No.
Are we cousins?
Well, to both of you, actually, in Dr. Birdsong, I just wanted to, so, I'm working with a group that's in conversations with Dr. Ben Chavis with the Wilmington Ten. And so, as you were, if it ever comes a time that you feel comfortable, I would love to hear that story because, you know, I knew Dr. Chavis before, but when I met him on this Zoom call, I found out that when he came to Norfolk, he got arrested in Portsmouth and my uncle got him out of jail. And I had no idea to that conversation. And then, my uncle also worked on Virginia's poll tax and they did a lot of work around the South. And I would love to know if there's a connection with your story that you just described. So, those things just kind of resonated. So, I just wanted to put out there that I would love to hear that story. And then, I've been working with some young people who have been documenting those types of stories. And I hope that, you know, we got our own pain and trauma, too, in our family with that stuff. But I think we should tell those stories and make sure that they are left for others to hear.
And it's interesting, too, because it really surfaces how we all have some level of impact on history, right? And, you know, like, it's the reach-back history, but it's also like, we don't know what history we're impacting today for moving forward, right? When you're in a position of power, when you've got the authority, both formal and informal, we don't recognize it in the moment, but we are shaping history, right? And so, you know, imagine 40 years from now and the conversation with that board is, I remember our superintendent was a lady named Dr. Birdsong, right? Or, you know what I'm saying? Like, you never know what the story is, the impacts you've had and your historical context that you don't see yet. So, I love the fact that we've kind of had this conversation grounded in the things that influence us because they shape the way that we influence others. And so, we have the responsibility to kind of paint that forward. I appreciate that.
And they shape the strengths that you all bring, so.
Absolutely. So, we had intended for it to be a shorter exercise, but I don't care because it worked out beautifully. I think we've been striving for you all to get to know each other. And it kind of is a great segue into what we're doing next, right? Because we are going to still be telling our stories. So, you just kind of had your preamble to your story. But I want you to, we're going to do an activity, you're going to get up and move around a little bit. But we want you to focus on your strengths, right? Oftentimes, when we engage with people, we engage with them in ways that create comfort for us, right? And so, we focus on the things we have in common, right? We minimize our differences and that kind of thing. And so, we wanted to have this conversation grounded in your Strengths Finder results because we want you to be able to share with one another, here are my strengths. Here's what I bring to this work, right? You just found out the why, you found out who the role models are, you found out where people, where their sense of home is. But what we want to focus on, too, is, you know, what are my strengths? How do those strengths show up in the way that we engage with one another? And how can I use my strengths to capitalize off of your strengths, right? So, we're moving out of the deficit mindset into a strength-based kind of way of thinking. And so, Tom Rath, who wrote Strengths Finder, says, if you spend your life trying to be good at everything, you'll never be great at anything, right? And how true is that, right? And oftentimes, as leaders, we feel like we have to do it all, right? Lauren, you were saying, you went in that school and you were like, I got to turn this around. I got to do this fast, right? Same thing with you. I had the same experience as a principal, first year principal, like, let me fix this, right? And then, I quickly realized, wait a minute, this is going to take a little longer than I thought.
Sitting down in tears one day.
Exactly, right? And so, I think that as leaders, we have to resist the urge of trying to be great at everything, right? And recognizing and focusing, to your point, on the things that we know are going to get us the most results for the children here in Norfolk Public Schools. And so, keep that front of mind as we go through it. In the toolkit, you need to link again real quick. Does anybody have the access to the toolkit? I'm going to pull it up. Let me, let me. I have a slide with the QR code somewhere in here.
Thank, oh, wait, I may have.
Think I do. Hold on a minute.
Folder?
Yeah, you have access to the folder. Let me just kind of bring up the QR code for you.
Oh, I have that. Never mind.
There you go. You can use your phone on the QR or you can type in the bitly. There's a folder for January 11th, I believe, right? Mr. Jordan, you see the folder?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
I'll get mine for me.
Got what you need, Ms. Campson? Good, good.
Do we need this, too?
Yeah, we're going to in a moment. Hold on to it.
One and the other one. Okay, I didn't have this one.
So, in the folder is a document that looks like this. Let me go back real quick. Looks like that. Lifted strengths themes. It's just a two-pager that has all the themes from the assessment on it. And hopefully, you know where you fall on this, your primary orientations. But there's four domains of team strengths that I want us to just spend a few minutes talking about. You know where you land in a moment. You're going to share with the group and in an activity where you land. But they are executing, influencing, relationship-building, and being a strategic thinker. And so, if you're dominant with executing, it says that you're probably outstanding at getting things done, right? If you're an influencer, right, you're outstanding at getting momentum, building momentum with others, right? And the first one, executing, is really about how you help make action occur, right? How you move things forward. I'm executing, that's me, I'm an executor, right? It says there, in a work setting, you're likely excellent at turning a vision into tangible, practical steps. And you can take the 30,000-foot idea and get to the street-level resources to pull it off. Oftentimes, people who are visionaries are not the same as people who are enactors, right? I don't know if you've ever worked for folks, like, if you have previous bosses that had great ideas, right, and could articulate them beautifully, but then relied on the people around them to make it happen, right? And so, most times, visionaries are not necessarily executors. The influencer, though, right, that person does build momentum in others, right? That person can, you know, call out what needs to happen. And then, it says, here, in a work setting, you're likely comfortable with taking charge. You might speak up or give others a voice or give a project a voice when it would have otherwise been ignored. So, if that's, if you're influencer, that's where you fall. Relationship builder, right? That's a person who is, has high emotional, a high emotional intelligence, high EQ, right? And they got good people skills. Like, they're the person who can rally the troops, who can get people to, like, you know, listen to them, right? It says here, on the job, you probably build rapport easily. You help others feel seen, heard, expected. And you can pick up on those nuances that hold a team together to create that culture of high performance that we're aiming for. And then, a strategic thinker, this is a person that can make decisions, right? And they're a critical thinker, they kind of see things through, they get all the pieces and parts before they make a decision. Says on the job, you can absorb and analyze information well. You probably enjoy nerding out on chosen topics. You might like research, predicting, processing information in a way that teammates don't. It's funny because as you guys were sharing earlier, I was listening to, trying to figure out who's in what by what they said, right? Like, I got, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I got thinker from Ms. Basane saying, like, I curiosity. So, I don't know if thinking is one of your top two. But I got that whole curiosity and that, like, wanting, having questions, wanting to know why, right? That's a strategic thinker. So, hopefully, you know, you see yourself in each of these, right? For executing, some of the key terms that come out are achiever, arranger, you know, having belief, consistency, deliberate, focus, right? Responsibility, being restorative. For an influencer, right, that you're, some of the key terms are activator, command, communication, competition, right? Self-assurance, significance, woo, have the woo factor, right? That's a person who, you know, can get people to say, woo, I get it, yeah. You know, I'm with you on that, right? Relationship builder, just what it sounds like, right? Adaptable, connectedness, developer, has empathy, an includer, right? Those are all the terms, relater, positivity. Those are people that hold the team together. And then, strategic thinker, some of the key terms are analytical, context, futuristic, ideation, right, input, intellect, a learner, and one who's strategic. All right. So, you know where you fall in each of these areas. And what we're going to do is, I've got you in groups of four. There's going to be two groups. I'm going to take one side of the room, other side of the room. So, you're going to get up. And what you're going to do in your groups is, you're going to, each person is going to spend five minutes, you have the floor for five minutes, to share your story through your strengths, right? And so, you're going to think, you're going to say, I'm an influencer, I'm a relationship builder, I'm an executor, I'm strategic thinking. Here's how that shows up and how you experienced me, et cetera, right? After each person shares, I want the whole group, the quad, to then take five minutes and make connections. I connect to that, Rodney, because. I connect to what you said, Carlos, because, right? And so, each person will make their connections in your conversation. And then, after each, after that, you're going to have another five minutes to talk about how you're going to leverage the collective strengths and talents of the group. And then, we're going to share that out with the larger group. So, both groups are going to have their separate conversations and they're going to come back together, right? So, group one is Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Campson, Mr. Jordan. Group two is Mr. Clanton, Ms. Basane, Dr. Martin, who had to leave us, and Ms. Buffalo. So, you'll be a smaller group for a moment, that's okay. But what I want you to do is, when you're in that group, so you're going to share your strength. You have, like I said, you have five minutes. You're going to share your strength, you're going to tell your story around how that strength shows up as, with you as an individual, but also, you know, how you bring that strength. But I want you to incorporate these four kind of prompts. You get the best of me when? You get the worst of me when? You can count on me too, and what I need from you is, right? I'll leave a slide up for you, so when you're in your groups. So, five minutes, uh-huh, go ahead.
Because I think the report, like, do you have Dr. Martin's top five?
I don't.
Oh, okay.
No.
Because I thought you probably had it. Yeah, we thought maybe the, you all also got a copy of the report.
We did not get your results. We wanted them to be.
Organic.
You'd have your, huh? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I don't have, so I don't have, we don't have anybody's results. Yeah.
I just mean, interesting, who's number one, everybody's number one, though.
Which category we fell in.
So, that's what you're, so, oh, okay. So, what you're going to do in your small groups is, you're going to only share your primary orientation.
Oh, the number one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I left that out.
So, which is your top strength?
Your top strength, right.
If we got a strength from one to five, oh, it's whatever falls in that category?
Yeah. Your primary orientation, right? So, you're going to share, oops, sorry. So, you're going to share your number one, your primary orientation in your five minutes' time. Now, you can, if you want, you have five minutes. Five minutes is a lot when you think about it, right? So, you might say, you know what, my top was this, but here's where, here's the other places that I show up. Share what, was it surprising to you? Share how you think it manifests itself in the way you, you know, show up to this work. To use your five minutes wisely, I'll give you, I might give you a little minute to plan for it. But in your five minutes, you want to share those things. And then, you want to also incorporate the four prompts. You get the best of me when, you get the worst of me when, you can count on me, and what I need from you, okay? Yeah.
So, this might tie to my strengths, but can you go back to the previous slide? So, some would say they got four, some would say they got five. You match the one that was number one. Look in the pie chart. You find that. And then, that tells you your domain.
Yes. Yes, yeah. So, if you guys want to take a minute, take a minute, yeah, your report should have it, too.
They're color-coded.
They're color-coded as well.
They'll tell you if it's executing or strategic thinking or relationship-building or influencing.
Yeah, on your results report, yeah, you should have the, it should be color-coded.
For each area.
And I tried to match the color, so.
And she also put it in the toolkit, like, on this page? See how they're, yeah.
What I'm saying, anyway, we'll figure it out.
No, okay. So, take a minute, take one minute. Let's actually, let's do, if you need to do a bathroom break, go ahead and do that, too. Prepare for your conversation. And then, we'll come back in five minutes and you'll get in your respective groups. Everybody good with that?
Stotus with us?
Okay.
This is Rodney, Jordan. I'm going to have.
Yes.
Five minutes per person to share, so they have the floor for that five minutes. Then, you each make a connection within the five-minute period, too. So, then, you can each go around and say, oh, I connect to Sharon in this way, right? Okay, whoever the speaker is. Then, at the end, after everybody has gone and you've each had an opportunity to make the, to draw the through line for your connections, then you say, how do we capitalize off of our group's strengths, right? We're going to come back and do a debrief so that you'll be able to hear some of what they came up with and some of what you came up with when we come back together. So, I want you to follow that protocol, but also, as you're having that conversation, you add these four prompts when you're the presenter, the, you get the best of me, the worst of me, you can count on me, and what I need from you, okay? Everybody clear? Or I'm going to keep time for you. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to keep reminding. Okay, I'm going to keep reminding you time-wise. All right, everybody ready? Everybody clear on the directions? Yes? Yes, I'll be, all right, go for it. Y'all decide amongst yourselves who goes first.
So, as everyone is coming back, make yourselves comfortable. If you need to stand, if you need to stretch, do what you need to do so that you're ready to kind of engage again. So, we want to hear from you all in your small groups. What were some of the findings that you had? So, take a minute, think about, what were some of the things that you learned about the strengths of your colleagues today? And then, the bigger thing is, how are you going to apply what you learned about each other in really strengthening and working and building these relationships? So, what's something that you learned?
And not every, you know, we don't have to hear hear from everyone, but are there some things that you're like, wow, this was really important? Especially as we begin working together. We wanna hear that.
Yeah, since you guys didn't hear what each other said too, maybe from each group, you can kind of share something I learned in my my circle, who's in my circle, so we wanna open that up.
Alright.
I learned that Tanya is a researcher and she loves it. So, uh, you know, when you talk about policy and want to get research on policies and how to move forward about, you know, get information about a policy, um, creation, I would, you know, ask Tanya, do you mind, you know?
I know, you go to it, right?
She loves to do that, so have at it.
I'll 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 add for for my group. So we we had commonalities with the analytical execute executor realm, but it was interesting, um, well, we didn't have Dr. Mark, Adele wasn't with us. So really, um, you know, with the five strengths, you know, I really fell into domains. Whereas like Carlos, for instance, fell in more than two domains. So, you know, I just think, um, I don't, I don't know how to, which I thought was interesting, that so that maybe, you know, I like, I'm more like a behind the scenes worker bee kind of person and maybe he's a more out front type of person, you know? And so those are some revelations and and, uh, descriptions, you know, that may be already part of our, you know, what we already know about each other. But also just kind of affirms affirm some of that, you know?
How do you see opportunities to put that to use? In other words, how do you apply that?
I think I think for us, you know, even when we talked about the four, the paradigms of, I think, I think, I hope that it leads to better understanding. It is where I see it taking us. You know, the what do you need from me, you know, when we did that exercise, it was like, okay, so you see that this is, this is who I am. Like, it's not like that I am trying to do something to someone, it is, this is who I am. I need to understand things, I need, I ask questions, I'm analytical, this is who I am at my core. And, um, so accept me for who I am. And so that's what I hope that it, that's, I hope the story that it told.
And it changes the way you see people, sometimes you gotta give each other reminders and say, remember, this is the way that I think. Right. And seeing it as a strength, right? Cause I think that's that ends up being the the caveat is that things that may be counter to the way that we approach things, we then see them as a deficit in another person. This like this activity is designed to help you think about it and from a strength based framing, right?
Exactly, that was, um, is the tried in that particular group down there. One of the first things that came out of that, uh, that I didn't know Tiffany is a Virgo like me, so immediately I was like, oh, I already know some of your traits. So, cause we we share some similar traits in that. And one of the things that I learned, I mean, even what Ms. Basane's saying, um, even during the the six months of kind of like sitting in that particular chair, I knew that Tanya liked to ask a lot of questions. But it was like try to find that balance in that one and I, you know, hearing from her down there, it's like she's a researcher, she's, it's like, I could relate. When even when you were talking, I didn't share to that respect, but when I was younger with my mom, I was that kid who asked why. My mother would say something and I would say why. And then it would just be keep drilling down so that you can get that particular sense of understanding. And that was one of the things that I realized and I was like, okay, well, that's where we had this whole conversation about documentation, kind of like I send this because I wanna remember things, where I'm the type of person, like, I have so many things that are going on and I'm moving and I'm just getting it done, that sometimes if you send me a text or you send me an email, if I don't respond to it then and there, it may get lost in the sauce. And then that can be misinterpreted that I'm ignoring or not trying to get to you because I've moved on and then I see it and it's like, oh crap. So that's when I communicated, it's like, and I've said to 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 Tanya, I said, anytime you've ever called me, I've always answered. Uh, I answer the phone. So for me, I'm the type of person, if you really want something, even if you sent me an email or a text, just call me. And if, you know, and I'll get back to you. And and I hope that that understanding's out there, just call me. Um, and I'm gonna communicate it because that was the other thing that we realized when we were talking. I hate text messages because we, I'm an analytical person. So I use a lot of emojis in my text messaging because when I see things come to me, I can read it and get thirteen different interpretations based on what I'm experiencing in that moment or whatever. This is where Dr. Birdsong and Sharon had told me to calm down because sometimes you'd be like, what is this? Like, are you okay? But that's one of my things, and so I've learned, so why coping with that one is that I do emojis. So I put a smiley face like, hey, I'm sending this to you, but I'm doing it with a smile, it's it's nice. Though it may be direct, it's with a smile because I'm a direct person too. So it just was, one of the things that we picked up was like, oh yeah, I understand, cause that's how she communicates with texts.
You know what's interesting about that, like that, so so you think about when, how we're raised, right? So imagine if, this goes back to like you with being a Y person, right? If you're raised and you were a Y child, but you're always told, cause I said so, right? Or you're always shut down, you become an adult that when you're working with a person who who's in who was inquisitive, right? Who asks a lot of questions, you see that as, cause cause you were raised with, cut it out, don't ask too many, right? And so then you see that as a challenge. So a lot of times, a lot of a lot of our reactions to people's strengths is based on our own upbringing. Remember that one of our norms is the whole curiosity versus judgment and also recognizing our limitations of our own lens? Those are the, we respond to people and, you know, what may be their strength, we may see it as a deficit only because of the way we we were raised, right? And that created a blind spot for us. And so you might see a person asking a lot of questions as, you know, what is, what's this person's problem, right? Like, you shouldn't be asking questions, cause you were raised with the whole, cause I said so, stop asking questions, sit down, go, children are seen, not heard, right? All those things. And so we have to recognize what parts of our, yeah, we have to recognize what parts of our own upbringing, right? Make us experience people in these ways because you experience people based on all the filters you had coming up. So that makes perfect sense, yeah. Yeah, anybody else?
Well, I think we we found an interesting thing as we were doing it, when we were doing the second one and the very last item was, what do I need from you? And 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 we, and what we were doing is we were doing, everyone was doing one and then we talk.
Whipping around, yeah.
Yeah, well, not so much, that's how we got behind, we were discussing. But when we got, so we had done it all and we just had the last one and it was gonna go around the table. And and so someone said, well, I need you to be there to catch my back. And and then the next person said, yes, and this is what I need. And we got to talking about the same thing, basically that was what we were all going with. And I thought that's kind of the point of what we're doing, even while I was over here pouting over the papers.
She's straight now.
They're used to it, yeah. Sharon had my back.
Exactly, Sharon and Ms. Tanner got you what you needed, right?
But what it accomplished for us was to realize we were kind of all on the same page, which is what planning to go, what we're trying to accomplish here. And so, I mean, didn't y'all kind of feel that? Cause we were all, it was funny, oh, one person said, I want to know that you're gonna be there to catch my back. And then someone else said, yeah, and then we started talking about different examples of it. So I think it it was, it it had a good purpose in that we learned that we had things in common was the big thing that came out of it.
There was a method behind our madness.
I've been wondering.
But but I think too, the importance was that, is that you were able to be specific and say, this is what I mean by.
Well, and that's, we all did that, and we all just, and that was why having it all of us do, when after everyone doing that same one, just doing around the circle, it we kind of let us tie together and look at the differences.
Yeah, and it's funny too, cause Valda and I were talking about our, I did this, it's been years ago. But one of the things that I found is one of my top ones is I'm a connector. And I'm always thinking about how do we build these relationships, how do we make it matter? And and so she. And I get on her case about it, like, we only have four hours with them and I'm not spending two hours doing team building. Mind you, we just spent two and a half hours doing team building, so she won that battle. And and I'm the one who's like, you know what, it's important. You you have, you cannot deal with people if they don't have a relationship, so. So, yeah. We balance each other out, I think, because she is the executor. I'm executor all day long. And I'm like, okay, but first, before we can execute, we gotta have a relationship. So, yeah. So thanks for indulging us in that, cause like, you're right, we did, we spent two and a half hours really focusing on building team. That's that first outcome, right? About how do we build these trusting relationships? And we thought it was important to invest this time because we have a new board member. And we appreciate you leaning into the process and hopefully it does inform the way you will engage with one another, right? Keeping this, keeping this, this ease interactions front of mind as you think about who your colleagues are, the 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 many things that make up who they are. Like, no, no one person in this room is a monolith. And so always kind of when you, when to live out that that, um, the norm of Brown, uh, you know, not coming from a place of curiosity. You know, if you can always kind of remember this activity and say, hmm, what don't I know in this moment? Like, I'm receiving this in a contentious way or whatever the case is, whatever, whatever it is that you're receiving from an individual. If in that moment you take the time to pause and say, what don't I know in this set, in this circumstances? And what might be an alternative interpretation, right? So to spend that time saying, I wonder if the reason why Carlos is responding in this way is because, and you're putting it back on, that's his style, that's his. I remember, oh, that's right, he's he's analytical, oh, that's right, I remember when we did the strength finder activity, right? That creates that buffer of of your mind going straight to like a negative interpretation. So keep this activity in mind, I think there's there's some strength in that, right? There's some strength in always reminding yourself that, you know, I need to take the time to, one, ask the right questions, what don't I know? Um, and why, and then noticing both those, both the questions that I'm posing, they're not questions you're asking of others, you're questions you're looking, asking yourself, looking in the mirror for. What don't I know? What's another way that I can interpret what what I'm feeling right now, right? What's an alternative interpretation to what I think I'm experiencing right now? Just those two questions, I think, gets us to a place where you say, oh, you know what, let me take my defense out of this. Let me recognize limitations of my own lens, let me come from a place of curiosity over judgment and reframe my response to what I think I'm receiving, right? Those same two questions, by the way, I had, um, a school that I was coaching, the principal. And we, they, this particular school just had like a, I guess it's their process, that all you had to do was fill out the referral form and buzz and we come get the kids, right? And so I was coaching this principal, so I'd be on site, this is in Pennsylvania, and I'm like, okay, I know, you, I flew here for the day and all we spent the time doing was running to classrooms to pick up kids. And so I was just like, this, this is not working for me. Like, I'm supposed to be here coaching, right? But what we did was, I said, let me see your referral form. Now, the referral form was nothing but all these statements, like insubordinate, disrespectful, all these like very subjective things. And so all a teacher had to do, right? Carlos is acting up, let me get my little paper, check, 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 check the whole thing off, cause all I had to do was check off boxes. There was no form, no place for a narrative, check, 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 buzz the office, please take Carlos and be gone, right? And that's all we were doing, is running around, going and be and and picking up kids and putting them in this room. And I asked to see the referral form, when I saw that it was a bunch of checkboxes, I said, I said, I got something for you. So we changed the form to those two questions. What, what, in narrative form, describe the behavior of the student, right? What might be an alternative interpretation as to why the child acted that way? Same two questions. Now, I will tell you, referrals cut dramas- dramatically, right? One, probably because nobody wanna fill out no, no, no narrative. But two, it forced the teacher, right? It forced the teacher, we shift the behavior back to the adult in the room. What are you doing? How are you interpreting this behavior? What might be another reason why this is happening? We this morning had an experience, uh, we've been talking about on the break, we went to Wawa to get a cup of coffee. There was a young man, and this this is aligned with that, I know you guys, in your neighboring city, a six year old that brought a gun to school, right? But in the Wawa, yeah, in the Wawa, um, a little boy who I say should have been at school, but he wasn't, was upset with his mother. With someone we think might have been. Might have been his mother, who, for context, was purchasing beer at ten o'clock in the morning, okay? This young man had clear behavior problems, like, you know, as an as an educator and a mother, like, I wanted to go scoop him up myself, I wanted to go and like, cut it out, right? But he's swinging at her and he does this gesture. Oh, my. At her. And she makes a comment that he's lucky security is in here, cause there was a security guard in there. That whole, that whole thing just disturbed us terribly, right? And we were talking about like, what kind of trauma is is he experiencing, right? And so I, so I kept thinking about that little boy in a classroom, right? And what are we doing with that little boy? The referral, come get him, right? Get him out of here. And instead, I would want someone to do what we did, like, we were debriefing, we were like, I wonder what trauma he's experienced? What's causing that behavior? We didn't just say, she had bad kid, you see how he was acting with his mother, that kind of thing? We immediately went to that whole, you know, what don't, what don't we know? Right, what don't we know? What 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 helped this his child need, like, what's going on behind his, of course, you don't have those answers. But in that moment, right, we didn't go straight to a deficit mindset about, oh, he's gonna end up in jail and, oh my God, look at this kid, da, 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 which tends to be like most people's first inclination, right? And so so similarly, right, it's just, it's like, you know, how do we train ourselves to always be in this frame of what don't we know, right? What's an alternative interpretation of what we think we're experiencing and then what do we do about that? You know, there's a part, I've been sitting here all morning thinking like, where is this little boy now? Like, cause because when mom made the comment about, like, I could think that security needs to follow her out because she's probably going to cause him harm. They're probably gonna have a fistfight because the way he was swinging at her, he was doing midair swinging, like, you know, like towards her. It was the most disturbing thing and this kid, five, six tops? I would say six at the most.
And the mom likely may have some trauma as well, like, maybe it wasn't her beer, maybe she was told to go get it by somebody else. And, you know, the kid doesn't wanna go back to the house because of what's gonna happen.
There's so many things, right?
Perhaps that person drinks the beer.
So many interpretations that that we don't consider in the moment. And I, and it goes back to like, we had talked about this on a couple sessions back about always coming from a place of grace, you know, even with one another. Because those are the things that help to build relationships. If you don't come from a place of deficit of what's wrong with the person, which is why we wanted to shift you to, what are our strengths? Like, here's my strength, here's a strength that I bring to this work, this conversation. I need you to use the lens looking at me through my strengths, right? And not seeing what I see as a strength, my my ability to be analytical, my, you know, my my being inquisitive. You need to see those things as strengths to help make us better. And so hopefully you that you came away from that activity with kind of that framing. So we hope that you you take that forward in our work.
Before you move forward, can we hear the top five from everyone?
Yeah.
I was about to ask the same thing.
Oh, good, 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 yes, yes.
Just a disclosure, I did not print mine out, so you can go past me and I'll listen to everyone else.
You wanna start the corner or we going alphabetical?
No, you can speak.
Alphabetical last name.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That would be me.
Go for it.
Alright, so, uh, top five, number one, responsibility, purple. Um, number two is analytical, green. Number three is relater, blue. Number four is developer, blue. And number five is restorative, purple.
They had two purples, two blues?
Yep, and I would point out that I had no influencing under my, um, ten.
I put it back up, yeah. In your hand, look at the green, go down, go down, go down, you see that green box?
Oh, yes. So that means that this thing is green?
That's your top five?
Yeah. Okay. Well.
Those colors are not.
Oh, I see, how did I miss that one?
No, they don't match.
I mean, they do, it's just hard to, like, I, it's funny.
Green was thinker.
Let me go back here, let me do this, let me go back to this. So blue, orange, a different blue.
Green is strategic, no, that green is strategic, that's influencing. I don't know the act, I don't know that color. Well, this one is the one that I missed when I was copying them. Anyways, I'll tell you what color they are. Alright, so number one is futuristic, and that's green. Well, yeah, but that's, but that's number three.
Uh huh. Futuristic is.
That's the domain, there are four major domains that all thirty-four, uh, strengths fall within.
Yeah, but I.
You're you're good.
You're good.
You're good.
I'm sorry. You're good.
So strategic.
Alright. Well, futuristic, green.
Strategic.
Activator.
Number two.
Mm-hmm. Activator.
Activator.
Was that green?
Orange.
Orange.
Influencing. Influencing, yeah.
Alright, number three, strategic, which is green. Yes. Number four is arranger, which is, I don't know, this is the one I had to go back and run.
Arranger is executing, orange.
Okay, and five is input, green. What does that mean?
You got no purple.
You're mostly strategic.
Yeah, you're mostly, so see the green, see it on what I have left?
Oh.
Most of yours fell into the green, so you're a strategic thinker.
And just one, oh, okay.
Three of your five, I believe, three of your five were were strategic thinking. The last one was what?
She had one influencing and one executing.
Wow, it's weird, I look at mine, they're even, except for one.
Yours are all the same?
Two, two green, two, I'm sorry, what were yours again?
Uh, well, it's the, purple got four, but the others, I had three greens, three blues, four purples.
So you're primarily an executor. Yep.
Oh, and so I'm primarily thinking?
Uh huh, you're primarily a strategic thinker.
Okay.
In my top, that was in the top ten, yeah.
Dr. Birdsong?
Okay, my top five context, which surprised me, that was my number one, and that's.
Strategic thinking.
Yeah. Enjoy thinking about the past, which I do, I love history and understanding the present by thinking about the past or researching the historical pieces of that. So it came out as my number one. Yeah, str- strategic thinking is the domain, analytical is number two. Like, Mr. Jordan too, Mr. Jordan and I are twins, by the way, we learned that. Mr. Jordan is my new twin. Yes, we are twins. Analytical, strategic thinking, number three was relater, and that's relationship building. That was my, um, number three. Um, number four was learner, which is strategic thinking. And number five was discipline, which is executing. So my top, my top ten were mostly strategic thinking, um, executing and relationship building. Those are my top three domains.
They're all important skills for a superintendent, look at that.
So that's Sherwood Four's coming.
So that Sherwood Forest conversation was in that category. Discipline.
Sherwood Forest conversation.
We were talking about Sherwood Forest.
In the branch.
In the branch.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
Excellent, thank you. Noel?
Noel. Okay, um, I'm not sure which ones, mine are color-coded too, but my top one was discipline, then responsibility, then harmony, then belief, then developer.
So, was that execute?
Then responsibility.
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 Is.
Discipline.
Executing.
Responsibility.
Executing.
Harmony. Influence.
Harmony is influencing of belief.
Uh, belief.
Belief is executing.
Executing and developer.
Executing. No, relationship building.
Yeah, but most of yours so far have been in executing.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
That makes sense, right? That's the person that gets things done, makes action happen, right? Good, yep. Ms. Basane?
Uh, my five was, my top was learner, which is think, strategic thinking. Uh, my second was analytical, also strategic thinking. Uh, third, responsibility.
Executing.
Executing. Fourth, achiever, executing, and belief, executing.
Oh, so you're mainly executing and strategic thinking, right? You had three in executing of your top five?
Yep, yes.
So execute, same thing, right? Gets things done, make things happen, yep. Ms. George?
All right, uh, number one was learner. Uh, number two was strategic. Number three is, uh, individualization.
That's relationship building.
Number four is intellection. And number five is analytical. So I think four of the five are strategic and the one in.
So you had more, you had one in relationship building and two or three in strategic thinking?
Yeah, one in relationship building. I think all the rest were strategic thinking.
You didn't have an executing? I thought execution was one of them.
Learner, strategic.
Analytic is, uh, strategic.
It's strategic.
Yeah, 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 okay. So you don't have your report, you said, right? Okay, all right. She'll send hers out in an email to you. Excellent, excellent. I hope you saw the value of that activity. I think it is important for us to take the time.
All of ours are different.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, it's funny, because, so, look at the top of this, the top of this thing, it says, teams should be well-rounded precisely because we as individuals are not, right? And so you actually want to have a team that has reflection of all those different ways of thinking, but you need to see them as strengths, right? When you're making decisions, you say, okay, like, who's, who, you know, what's, what's the relationship aspect of this? You have a person that will bring that forward, you know, what's the strategy? We're gonna do this, and that's the strategic thinker. How we execute, that's the executor. And then influencers, who do we need to involve stakeholder-wise? Which, this plays in very well to what we're gonna talk about in a little bit around, you know, creating coherence, right? Um, and so know that everybody has these different ways of approaching problem solving through their strengths. All right. Um, okay, so, in your toolkit, you also got a copy, and I sent it as an email, you got a copy of these norms with the yellow highlights that reflect the language changes. So what I want to do is, I want us to spend a little bit of time revisiting the norms, because my hope is that we will adopt them formally today. But you'll notice that for each of the norms, that we, there's, there's some needed actions. And what I want you to think about is, how will you all accomplish those needed actions? Because they're not things that should wait until we're together, right? So some of these things, we're gonna have to think about, okay, well, if we have to identify smart goals. So I'm gonna walk you through a process, but what, what our, our first, uh, task is to review these norms with the changes that are highlighted in yellow and make a decision if you can live with it as it is. And say, yes, this is, this is tight enough, or are there additional edits that we want to make? Hopefully, you had your copy, and you were able to make changes or write notes or whatever, because now's the time for us to have that discussion. Make sense? Okay. So, the first one, oops, the first one was student-centered. Um, and we changed some language there. I'm gonna leave that up and let you read it. We, we, we added some of the language that you all mentioned, um, around social, emotional learning, which, um, I also put some resources in the folder around that for you two. So you'll see the, in yellow are the changes. So take a look and tell me your thoughts. Rodney?
So, um, as I, as I reviewed these, the, and I think maybe it belongs here, the, the one thing that I think has, that got lost along the way is, um, making sure that we all have information at the same time. So when I look under contributions, where we have, we will ask questions in advance of public meetings to ensure preparedness for student-centered discussions and seek relevant information. There's, to me, there should be something, um.
A process?
Or, and, and make sure we all have it. You know, there's, there's, I'm a little, you know, even though the learner thing says that I ask questions, but the, once we get the information, I think it's important that everybody has that information so that we can have those discussions. So, uh, I don't know if it's an addition to this, but to me, if it just said, we will, uh, ensure preparedness for student-centered discussions. Somehow, I just want to add the piece that says that I don't ask an individual question, and I get information, and everybody else doesn't have the benefit of, of that.
The under needed action, where I've got, um, determine a process and timeline for making requests for information, data, et cetera. If we flesh that out, because I, I kinda want to create another, like, a process document that will kind of match with these, once we get through all these needed action items. So if we, if, when we outline what that looks like, it's, um, here's the process for requesting information. Here's the way that it's shared out with everyone, right? Like, let's say you ask a question, like Rodney has a specific question, or he would like to see some data. Rather than Dr. Birdsong going through people and getting that data only sent to Rodney, it gets sent to everyone, because we can assume that if it's a question for one, it might be a question for all, right? Okay, so let me put that in the notes, because I think that'll be one of our, if we create like a separate.
I think we talked about that too last time.
Process piece. Yeah, that's why I had there that whole pro- process and timeline for making requests. But it sounds like it's also, how will it be disseminated, right? All those things, okay. Okay, keep going.
Well, that, that really was all I had. I just felt that, on that particular one, that, um, it was a lot on the asking, but not much on the receiving. Even though the first one says we will examine, so that's, other than that, I'm comfortable with, uh, the student-centered one as it, as it currently exists.
Other, other input?
There was something that I wrote down. Let me see here. While you're looking for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so I had a question about that same one that Mr. Jordan just raised. So, and I think I, I might have raised it, um, last time as well. So one of, one of the things that I have some hesitation about, or at least, um, wonder if we need to be explicit in this, is that this does not mean that questions may not be asked in a work session or a meeting. Because I don't want it to be that, well, why didn't you ask that question before coming here today? You know, that what kinds of questions may be asked? Like, these are questions of clarif- clarifying questions versus, um, you know, because I, I worry too about the time that may be spent for the administration to answer, you know, Mr. Jordan's question. And then maybe I have a question that piggybacks on his question. And then I can just imagine then what the administration may do behind the scenes to try to answer our questions. But if we all collectively, collectively first have an understanding of what that question is, and say, oh, do we, you know, we have this agreeing, like, oh, that's a good question, let's try to get some more information. I think that's a whole other, you know what I mean? That's a whole other level of engagement when we're doing it in a meeting versus via email, or however, phone call, you know? And that's the other thing. If it's via phone call, like, you know, we may not see that, that documented question even being asked.
As I'm listening to you, I'm, I, it sounds like if there are questions or data or additional information that would help inform decision-making, you want that ahead of time, right?
Right.
And, and of course, clarification, this can still happen in the room.
Yeah, like, what do you mean? Like, what does this mean? Yeah.
So I think the things that require Dr. Birdsong to go to cabinet members for data, that information that would be relevant to informing your conversation and decision-making, those things should happen in advance, and we have to outline what that looks like. But yet, to your point, it doesn't negate the asking for clarification, or having, leaving room on the agenda for substantive discussion. Right? And, and additional fact-finding in the room, yes. All right, let me, I'm writing myself a little note here. I don't know how we frame that, but I think it'll be something that. Keeping in mind, right, these are, this is, this is gonna be internal. This is yours, right? This is how the board will operate. I think at some point, you know, what the, the early statement that we value student excellence, those things should go on the website. Those are the things that should be forward-facing. The process, interactions, contributions, needed behaviors are things that are internal. So they can be, we can have flexibility around what that looks like, you know?
Right, right, and that's exactly why I'm bringing it up, because like, our behaviors as we build our relationships and trust. I mean, that, right now, that is some of the behavior that we're experiencing is the, you know, why didn't you ask that before coming today, you know, or something like that? So I think to be really clear about, about that right now, maybe it becomes commonplace later, but I think right now, being very clear about what we mean is important.
Yeah, so I don't know whose hand was up first.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, everyone, it's just gonna get worse today, so can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
I agree with what Tanya is saying, in that it, you need to walk in with the information that you need. And, 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 uh, and, and deciding which one you can get an answer to first that works okay, that gives you the background information, is, is, is great. And that there are times that there are things you're gonna need to ask within the thing. I, my one concern is that maybe there seems to, needs to be some kind of time limit so that we don't go on hour after hour, um, to the point that other people lose interest.
Yeah. Are you all using the process, the agenda process? Because I think that this will help solve the discuss versus decide, right? If, if something's on the agenda and it's a decide, a, a decide, then you, then you should be able to, you know that that's gonna be a decision point that has to be made. Is there, what is, what is, what do board members need in order to be ready for a decision? If it's a discuss item, you build in the time for the conversation, which means you ask the clarifying questions then too, but you do within the timeframe. So, I know we shared that template.
That sounds good. I just want to make sure that we clarify on that, because certainly, there's many things that we can do by asking ahead. Little things that, but there are also big things that do need to be discussed, as, as Tanya was saying. Uh, and, and that's perfectly, even if it's not something that I feel needs to be discussed, it doesn't mean it shouldn't be discussed with the majority of the board. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we limit how long we talk about it, because a lot of times, there's repetition. So it needs to be done, and, I mean, I, we seem to be moving that way anyhow, but just so that that's mentioned also. And, and maybe that's something we can be harder, the harder information on. If we look at it with both, from both points of view, and kind of find a, a way in the middle that, that is satisfying to everyone.
How do you all manage, uh, the time for public comments?
Goes on until the last speaker.
But each.
For three minutes. Three minutes for each speaker.
Oh, you're talking about from us?
No, 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 no. When someone comes to the table.
If we have fifty speakers, we're gonna hear them for three minutes.
Every single one, they get three minutes.
Get three minutes.
Yeah, as long as they follow the procedure.
Keep that in mind, when you all are looking for ways to manage your own conversations.
Not three minutes, but.
Right, not, not the three minutes, but just a time limit. Just say, all right, we're gonna devote X number of minutes to these questions. And once we get to that, have a way, have a process for saying, if there are questions that we do not address, then we're going to do X. But you all have to decide what that X is going to be.
Yeah, and, and I was gonna say, I think as part of the, the, the process, and as we discuss what our monitoring looks like, that there may, you know, there may be some things, and you all talked about it some time ago, about how far in advance you may get something. So, I'm just making something up. Let's just say we're talking about, uh, a high school construction project. We may talk about the high school construction project for forty-five minutes over three min- three meetings. It doesn't mean that we get it once and we have to speak to it for whatever it is, uh, two hours or whatever, in one meeting. And I think if we can look at that, we can achieve both things. We can keep the, the work sessions or the meetings, discussion meetings, tight. And we can build on the information. It's not that we have to get the information, discuss the information, and act on the information in a two-week period, if it doesn't call for that.
Because it may be that, as part of that conversation, it's like, oh, you know what? It would probably be beneficial if we had more information about blah, blah, blah. And, and so then an action item that Dr. Birdsong will walk away with would be that, at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring whatever that missing piece was, right? Because especially if it's an item that's not going for decision, and it's still an item that's for, that's up for discussion. All of these things can be handled with the way the agenda is built.
Right.
I think the other thing is, once, when we get to it, you'll see that I'm trying to, I'm gonna try to have you really align your work and that monitoring calendar to strategic plan goals. So it may be that when you're talking about resources, for example, and the goal in that one, and with data points, you need to, you know, so you, you would know ahead of time, you know, we're gonna work on goal, goal two initiative number one, so we're gonna make some decisions. We need, we, I'm gonna, we're gonna make sure you have all the data around, you know, if it's, if it's a capital improvements thing. All of these things that you're talking about are, are driven by the way you build the agenda, but also, once you're clear on your board priorities, right? Because, because we shouldn't be talking about things that are not part of the board priorities. And so as I walk you through some of these next steps, it's really to get you to think about what are our priorities, and then how will we monitor those priorities in every meeting, right?
So, could we perhaps think about, uh, considering that, that we maybe put a value on each topic? For example, the school. We need to have discussions about what we're gonna do with Maury. And we do need to have discussions of, I mean, that's the lengthy kind of thing. So we, so, uh, over time, we could have an idea of how much time was really necessary. And maybe that's an hour, maybe it's an hour and a half for something that big. And we could, and then we'd say, okay, well, we'll do them on these next four dates or something. I think you said three, but part four would even be better for something that big. And, and then, then we split up the time, like you said, that's a great idea. And then it could be number one, number two, and then we, at the end of that, there would be, the last thing would be vote. That's the date, and we vote on that date. So it doesn't come back around, and then, you know, six months down the road, we don't have a decision.
Yeah.
I think that's what I want to see.
Yeah, it's, it's all about just really tight agenda planning and sticking to the agenda, but also running the agenda through the filter to things that we say are important, right? Which is, you know, is this student-related? Is this workforce-related? Is this family caregiver and community-related? And does it inform our board efficacy, the things that we espouse as being our priorities? Okay, I captured all of that.
And one final thing on, on that same, um, in that same area. In advance of public meetings, do we need to specify a timeframe around that? Because technically, three fifty-eight is in advance of, of the meeting that starts at four o'clock. You, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm being a little silly about that, but just, you know, maybe that's something we need to think about, especially if it's something that's going to take some time to put together and, and provide.
And that, that marries to my point, that I think we need to not think of this as tied to a particular meeting. It's more about the principle of, we're trying to make sure that when we are preparing for the public meeting, we have done certain things. And so, as, like, was just being said, in terms of that agenda planning process, we'll, we'll kind of know that. But I agree with you, that I do think we need to be clear that we're not necessarily talking about some seventy-two-hour window before the next meeting, necessarily.
Exactly. And to Tanya's point, I mean, I don't know if we would really need that if, if the trust were there, like. were there, like, a board member would know, you shouldn't send me something at two o'clock on the day we're getting ready to meet at four.
Right.
Because she would say she's not sitting around reading emails all day. You know? So just.
And I would even say too, I think, a consideration for you all is the opening up of the agenda planning, or have an agenda planning meeting with the agenda planning team and then share out the draft agenda with everybody else, just for that additional, you know, input or something to consider, right? So that you're, you, you all are very clear on what the things we're gonna be talking about. And if there are things that need to be striked from the agenda, that conversation is had, had well in advance, right? So just, just something for you guys to think about, you know, chair and co-chair, as you're thinking about agenda development, both following the process and opening up that process, right? I think that would eliminate a lot of.
Yeah. I, I, I think if you've, you gave us a tool, I thought there was some sense that we would be willing to use the tool. Let's try the tool.
All right. Anything else on student centered that we should consider? So, so you're willing to adopt these changes, take them, they won't be yellow when you see them next, right? And I'm gonna kind of draft out the needed actions and some of what you've suggested here in a separate document. I'll, I'll work on that for you all. But otherwise, this works as is, correct? Great. Progress. The next one is workforce centered. And you'll see, I changed some of the language here. We talked about organizational culture, that language being incorporated, and we wanted to clarify the process by which sharing concerns goes through, especially as it relates to personnel matters, that that goes to the superintendent. So if things come to the board, we wanna have a clear process for, you know, how you share that with Dr. Birdsong and how you communicate to the constituent that brought, brought your attention, yes, I will take this forward, or, you know, that kind of thing. But we wanna make sure we have that unified, unified voice. So anything here that you have suggestions or edits on? And again, look at the needed actions, because those are the things that still need to happen in order for those, for the process, interactions, and contributions to work.
I have a question of clarity. As I'm learning. Will we say we will commit to meaningful board member interaction with employees and staff to better understand needs and challenges and establish trust? I'd just like to get a better sense of what that means. So the board as a whole, I, I, I have some thoughts about that. I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding what that means to us and what I think, and I wanna hear from Dr. Birdsong, what it means to her. Because there's, as we've talked about previously, to me, it's almost like if we're saying that we may hear concerns, just as we may hear them from the public, and then we share those concerns, that's one thing. If we're saying that individual board members, that we're encouraging us as individual board members to go and interact with employees and staff, I just think we need to be clear about what we, what we mean.
Yeah, I think so too. Good point.
So you see, I, I did have there identify and clarify a process for being informed or invited to school events, because we had a hot conversation last time around.
Yeah.
I was advised of that. I didn't know about that. That was on Saturday. Like, so we need a process, right? Which I think that's one of the things actually I think we go through Ms. Tanner going forward. But to your point, one of the reasons why this even came up was during the strategic planning focus groups, there was a couple of employee comments about, I never even met a board member, but I don't come to my school, da, 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 right? In the spirit of us changing the narrative, we wanna make sure that they know who you are, right? And that they had meaningful interactions with you. And by meaningful, it could be, yes, you're attending some of the events in their schools, and that they see you as a part of the community, right? So I think so, that's, that's the, that's the narrative that I wanna shift. That we want employees to see that this board works on their behalf, right? That you have an entire norm around being workforce centered, and they have to have a relationship with you as well, right? One of the things that I notice, like, I, I watch Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, board meetings, because I work for them too, right? And they'll, towards the end of the meetings, they always do like a whip around, you know, and it'll be like, I visited such and such school, and I got to meet so-and-so student in sixth grade, and got to read a book, whatever the case is. But they always center on how they engage with the community. And I'd love to see you all be able to do that as well. I think just to hearing that helps people know, okay, this, my board members are aware of what's going on in my school, they've been there. Because we wanna move that narrative away from that whole, you know, they don't know what's going on in my building, right? So I want you guys to think of a process for that. So now you're invited to different events, it's hit or miss. We probably need a tight process for that, where they invite you through Ms. Tanner or whatever, whatever the case is. She sends out communication to everybody, there's a such and such event happening this Saturday at this school. You all have some discussion around who's, who's attending. Let's make sure we have representation. If we can all go, we all go. If we can't all go, we can't all go. I mean, I obviously have lives, right? But I think that, that creates an opportunity for when you are in meeting, you can close the same thing, had, had the pleasure of attending the such and such fair, such and such school, right? That's meaningful engagement, that, that they feel like a board member values our events enough that they sent representation. And I think it could also be valuable if it's across your wards, right? You don't have to be only going to events in, you know what I'm saying? So those things I want you to think about, like, that's gonna get us to this meaningful board member interaction with employees and staff. That's kinda what I meant by that.
Okay. So I wonder, so to that point, I wonder if we will commit to school visits and, because the other, the other piece is, you know, we've had protocols or around, you know, direct communication with even, you know, Dr. Birdsong's team, you know? So what does that exactly mean? Like, to me, like, that, that is a bit left up to interpretation, right?
That's why I raised it.
Yeah. Well, I know, and that's why, so I hear what Valda's saying, we talked about that last time. Yeah, you know, like, you know, I see school visits is one thing, and we have a protocol, like, currently, like, our old, just for, for now, you know, our previous protocols were, you know, we had one around school visits, and then we had one around communication with, you know, with Dr. Birdsong's team, like, her, her staff. And that was separate. So do we need to distinguish that here is a question I'm putting out too? Because the way I read this right now, if I were to interpret this, it is go ahead and build that relationship with Dr. Paul. Dr., you know, like, I can communicate directly with any of our chiefs, any, you know, our executive directors.
What's the rule now? Like, what's.
It is that everything goes to, to the superintendent.
And then she can authorize us.
Yeah, she can determine that.
Yeah. And that works for you all, correct?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know. Yeah.
I personally think, I, I like the protocol that we have in place. If we could, if I could just speak to both, with the school visitations, for example, to be clear, the board members will reach out to me and say, you know, I've, you know, emailed principals such and such, I have a visit planned on that date. That just lets me know that they're going to be in the building that day. From my perspective, that works well. That works well, and it has worked well.
I think so.
Um, you know, as long as we're following that, because, you know, some principals come back, you know, just wanted to let you know, such and such came by, I didn't know they were coming by. So if we're consistent with that, I, I, I think, you know, that's a good practice to, to continue.
And that we call the teachers ahead of time, I mean, principals ahead of time. Is that a difference?
Yeah, that's why that protocol, in my opinion, is good, because it doesn't, you know, when a principal hears, a board member is here, regardless of what's going on, they're gonna feel the need to stop what they're doing. So it's, it's better to allow them the, the courtesy and professionalism of calling and, and scheduling something.
Yes.
Before you just show up at, at a school.
And that often gives you a really special thing to go to there, because they say, well, what about coming in and watching us?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that, that as it relates to, to school visitations, in terms of communication, as superintendent, I don't believe there's anything that Dr. Cataldo needs to know without, without me knowing. And so with the protocol in place now, if there's a question or something, then it, it goes through me, and then I determine who is best suited to answer that. And it may be that we end up scheduling a two-by-two meeting with me and a chief, or me and a principal, or, or what have you. And from my vantage point, that has worked well. So I, I, I like that protocol. I just can't imagine what it is that you need to start to my staff about that you can't speak to me directly about.
Yeah. Okay.
Could I say one thing on that? I, I agree with you, Mina, what you're saying, I really do. But sometimes when it's just a little thing.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
For me, it doesn't matter, even if, if it's a little thing. It may be a little thing to you, but it may be not a little thing. You know what I mean?
Okay.
And, and also keep in mind that when a board member comes to a school.
Right.
As a principal, it changes the whole feeling of that day.
Right.
You may have, you know, it's like, a, as a teacher, if a parent walks into your classroom and you don't know they're coming, you're like, okay, why are they here? What's going on?
Right.
Is it, it, it makes you question things, and it doesn't build trust. Part of what I understand you wanna do with the community is build that trusting relationship. But if you show up unannounced.
Right.
That's going to make people feel like, did I do something? Because again, we go to that narrative, what did I do? Versus, oh, they're here because, you know, we, we've got a good relationship. That's, that's not what a principal is feeling.
And when the principal doesn't know that I know, then it puts them in an awkward situation whereby this person is here, I'm sure they didn't tell you because I didn't know they were coming, but I wanted to let you know because it's going to be talked about, so.
Right. I need to, some other considerations, like, more, more globally, is that if you wanna create an organizational culture where the, the paradigm shift that needs to happen is this whole trust and transparency piece, right? So maybe one of the strategies you, you can think about enacting is, I'm sure you visit schools pretty frequently. There's no reason why you guys can't set up a schedule where you say, I'm gonna be with Dr. Birdsong and visit this school, this school, this school. This week. And then next week is she walks around with Rodney and they visit a couple of schools. What you, what you do is you, you're, you're picking apart this notion of when the superintendent and the board member come, it's a big deal. You're like, no, we're actually just visiting all the schools, we're making our rounds.
I don't think they perceive it.
You, you take down that guard that people, and then you create a culture where it's okay for the board member to come to the building. It's okay for superintendent, and people don't stop what they're doing, right? Takes time to get there, but I think that there's, you guys, you guys can have a strategy where you say, all right, we're gonna, let's look at the calendar. My school visits in, in January are gonna be with, with Mr. Jordan. My, my March visits are gonna be with Ms. Bassini. My April, you see what I'm saying? So then you're hitting all the schools, they're seeing you, and they see you with their colleague, they see with a board member. And you tell those schools ahead of time, don't prepare anything for us, we're just gonna come, we just wanna see kids, we just wanna stand in the hallway with you. Yeah, and it takes time to get to that place. But like, I worked in Frederick County, Maryland, schools, and I will say, it was, there was some things that weren't great about it. But I, but if a superintendent walked in, because it was smaller, superintendent walked in, or, you know, one of the chiefs walked in, it wasn't like, oh my God, somebody's here, it was like, oh, come, come with me, let's walk, let's, I have my radio, let's go. You know, I was, I was a suits and sneakers kind of principal, like, I was always in tennis shoes, because I knew it was gonna be running around the building. And it was like, get in where you fit, and come on, let's walk together. The staff began to see it as, that's, that's just normal, that's no big deal, we don't have to stop what we're doing, you know? They're gonna walk around classrooms with us, and they might ask a question or two or whatever, and keep it moving. So I say you all can come up with a strategy for how you infiltrate, right? And I think it's as simple as, let's do visits together, you know?
Yeah. But I feel like even in this conversation, we're reverting back to the school visits piece, but I think, which I think we're all on the same page and have been practicing that pretty, pretty well.
Yeah.
Right? Like, you know, but it's the piece about talking to, you know, the, you know, the chiefs, like, you know, if there's, I think to Ms. Campson's point, like, what if there was a question in a presentation about data or something, you know, like, how, how should we, what is the process that we should use to, to handle that kind of question?
Again, the question comes to me, and I will.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're currently doing. I'm asking, like, moving forward, is that working for all of us, is, is what?
Well.
You know?
I, I think that there's, so one, when I, my original thing was, because it said board member, not board, I, I think that almost what you were just describing in terms of whatever it is that we do, that it is what we do. You know, from, if it's in our board norms, this is what we're going to do. If we're gonna have, I don't know, listening sessions, if we're gonna do community engagement sessions, if we're gonna do town hall meetings, it's something all of us are doing together strategically.
You have a board engagement strategy.
Right, right. Now, that doesn't mean that individuals can't do their thing. In the context of these norms, I think we should be as one in whatever strategy that we're taking. The other side of it, and this is something that during my time on the board, I raise with every board and every superintendent is, on the administration side, it has to go both ways. So when we're, when we're told to come to you and not to your chiefs, then your chiefs need to know, don't just go to individual board member, because if you go to one individual board member and you, and, and then you must, hopefully you have been assigned to go to every board member, otherwise the, the system breaks down.
Right.
And so I observe where conversations take place between individuals, and I think we need to make sure as, as a part of this, that it's being worked on on both sides of the equation.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yep. Okay. And so it's the understanding then that chiefs go to Dr. Birdsong first, you know? And then that again creates a, a place where people feel like, okay, I know I'm gonna get the response, that, get a response, but it's also done in a way that we're not going outside of the protocol and breaking down the trust that we're trying to establish and the transparency, right?
Okay. I caught that. All right, I got it. Other, other edits or other considerations that we need to note. So in the action items, we have identify and clarify the process for being informed or invited to school events, create a process or pathway for gathering input from staff, develop a template for talking points to be shared in the one voice we language, and ensure board priorities and compensation and established tactics, et cetera. That you have those things underway. So the example I gave is, is there a compensation study currently underway, right? Because those are the things you should be focused on. If we're saying, oh, we wanna make sure that we're prioritizing attracting, retaining, and developing, and fairly compensating as our, as our norm, then you need to be thinking about what are the things that we need to be doing as a board, right, to ensure that? So it, and it might be that you say, okay, well, what are we currently paying? How is it competitive to others, right? Like, so you are studying, right? The thing that you say is gonna get you to that, that value proposition. So it might be, okay, then we need to, we need to commission a compensation study, and then you all get the compensation study. We devote some time to conversation around that. Are we competitive with, with surrounding districts? But I'm just making this stuff up, right? We, you know, so that's your discussion, that's your board, your board level discussion. You set a goal, a key performance indicator, by twenty twenty-seven, we wanna be competitive with all districts nearby, right? So you're setting a goal. So you're setting a goal, that becomes your work, right? This, these are our norms, but the actual, what is our day to day, comes from these, right? And so that's why I gave you the example about the compensation study. Because if we say, we want to make sure that people are fairly compensated, then what's the board's work in ensuring that it happens, right?
Amen.
When, down at the bottom with the needed action, did I miss something? Or did we talk about the talking points to be shared in one voice, which to me sounds like a really good idea?
Yeah.
And
Yeah, I mean,
That's something I think we, is that something that we're all in agreement of developing some way?
Yeah. So the things that are under the needed actions, what I want to do is, some of those things I'm going to build for you, right? So I'm going to, I'm going to come up with a template for, for talking points and that kind of thing. But some of this stuff is things you have to do, you have to make a decision about. So what I, what, once we kind of adopt these, what I'm going to create for you all is this action items list, and we're going to need people to put their names next to some of these things, right? So that they're all happening. So it's not like we wait till once a month governance training. It might be that, okay, Ms. Bassini says she's going to work on the process for being invited to school events, she's going to work with, with Ms. Tanner on that and present that to the team. Here's what we came up with, we did a little research, blah, 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 right? It might be somebody else says, oh, I'm going to, I said I would do it. But, you know, develop this template as a draft and bring it back to the team for input, right? Much the same way you guys have, you know, committee work, these action items are things that you all are going to have to kind of move forward because they're going to be the things that help us to implement the norm, yeah?
I have a favor to ask in that context. So you had us do an exercise, or maybe a couple of exercises around what's board work and superintendent work.
My job, your job, our job.
Yeah, so if there are things in these needed actions that don't belong to us, I hope we don't get assigned to them.
You will not.
Okay.
That's the thing. Remember, each of these needed actions are the things that this board needs
Right.
to enact upon the, the norm, right? So you all need a clear process for gathering input, you all need a clear process for developing a template. That's why it has to be decisions that you all make together, right? These are, these are going to be discussions and decisions that are made in, in a committee of all, right? But the charge is that if you are assigned one of the action items, you're bringing it to the group as a draft, not like, oh, here's the template we have to use, right? It's even as I propose these things to you, right, I'm like, here's an option, right? You all then have to make a decision as a board, yes, we're going to go with this as our talking point template, right? It'll be something that you guys, like, Ms. Tanner will then use it, right? It'll be something that you all operationalize. We need to be able, we need our, we need to be able to speak to X, Y, Z, what's happening in our district. Here's our template for filling out our, our talking points document. We, we, we all help inform what that document looks like, you know, it's a Google form, whatever. And then we know that if we're talking about, I don't know, capital improvements at a certain school, we have talking points about that. In, in the beginning, a lot of these things are going to feel like another thing, right? Like more work, but you'll find that in time, once they become operationalized, they're going to, they will eliminate a lot of the, the things that cause consternation, right? So yeah, it's going to be a pain the first time you have to come up with talking points around something. I don't know, and I don't even know what's coming up. Like, there may be something that's coming up that you're going to want to have a unified-
For a high school.
Yeah, to have a unified message around it. That could be our first, our first time coming up with our, our talking points, you know, around that.
The budget, yeah.
Yeah, so I will circle back to you, actually, because I'm going to, I want to create a, I'm going to draft a template for you all, but I'd like it to be grounded in a real issue. So maybe you and I can have a common conversation, you can say, here's the next thing that I know we're going to all need to have unified voice on. Give me some background, let me do a little homework, let me find out more about it, right? So that, that talking points template is, it has a little FAQ, right? You want to have a space for frequently asked questions, you want to have those responses. So I'll, I can draft something for you, and if we can use a real issue and maybe even in the room, fill out that template together, right? Oh, we need to make sure we say this, yes, let's add that, we need to make sure we say that, right? That's what you, that's what the habit I want you all to create, is that no one's handing you talking points and saying, go say this, and you're like, well, I don't want to say that, I don't believe in that, right? But if we have a template, it becomes a, a, a item that you all do in the meeting. Here's something we all need to be level set on how we're going to communicate this. Let's do our talking point template together.
We know what our community is going to ask you, yeah.
And that's something that would be changing over time, too, because as new things came up, some would fall off and, and the new ones would be added. So it'd be kind of an ongoing process.
But it's the investment in the process that you're also creating by doing it. You're like, okay, we know that this is part of our work and we're going to, we're going to make sure it's done correctly.
This is good. All right, I got that on my to-do list. Okay, so workforce centered with these other accommodations, we're ready to adopt this one?
I'm okay with it.
And I, and, you know, that language about positive organizational culture, that's, that's intentional, and I think, because that's going to be on the forward-facing piece. Because I think what you want to be establishing as a board is that, right? Like, you have responsibility for the organization's culture. We spend a lot of time talking about the culture of the board, but ultimately you want to be able to impact the, the, the culture of the organization. So is it a, is it an, an organization that is focused on employees' experiences, parents' experiences, students' experiences, right? That's, that's a culture piece. You know, they say, what does it say? They say, strategy, culture eats strategy for dinner, right? I think, I don't know, I may have made that up, I think I heard this. We can do all the strategizing in the world, right? But if the culture is one that does not receive it,
That's right.
Right? Then, then we'll be spinning our wheels. And so ultimately, these things are designed to create that culture.
And if you don't understand the culture, you can't implement the strategy.
Exactly, exactly. So yeah, so, yeah, see? So culture does eat strategy for dinner. I don't think I made that up, I think somebody did say that.
On a bumper sticker.
Okay, so workforce centered, we, we're going to adopt this one as well. Again, knowing that there's some needed actions that need to happen, but I'll, I'll work on that. Excellent. Next one was family caregiver and community. I renamed that one. Because we had some conversation around, like, family looks different, right? And so family caregiver and community centered. The norm itself is that we're going to value, we value our families, our stakeholders and community partners, and ensure that our governance efforts prioritize mutual engagement and collaboration. And I added the, in the service of Norfolk Public School students, right? And so we want to center on that language. The one change was, is similar to the other one, it's that we will share, the highlight in yellow, we'll share concerns from the community and constituents with the superintendent and maintain neutrality and confidence in her handling of concerns. And so you'll see in the action needed, one of the, you know, processes there was to kind of create that pathway. Let me look at this on my screen, I can't see that. So similar, similar needed actions, right? Clarify the process for being informed, we got that. Clarify the process for reaching board members. Create a process or pathway for gathering input from the community, right? So that's that calendar of listening and learning kind of sessions, right? That's something that you guys can, again, same thing, it can be done collaboratively and you can ensure that there's coverage across different wards. And it could be that sometimes there's partnership opportunities where, you know, more than one board member is, is, is in a ward that's not their own, whatever the case is. Establish a community engagement strategy, so what are, what are going to be the topics? Where will there be joint or the whole board, what is the whole engagement opportunities? Outreach beyond the civic leagues, that came up in our conversation. Develop a template for the talking points, which I was from the last one, too. Develop a written and published protocol and hierarchy for sharing concerns before coming to the board and superintendent. So that's the one that's to, to address that contribution. Do we have, is there a, there probably isn't one yet, but we need to come up with something where, so it's not just to pick up the phone and tell Dr. Birdsong, here's what's happening in such and such place? It could be that, but-
Are you talking about community members or?
Both.
Are you talking about how they share their concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we have a,
Sharing concerns before coming to the board.
A way of putting it in writing, which is, I think there's some, we did think about that, right? Because FOIA. But I also feel like, like there needs to be a more formal way. So right now it's probably like, I pick up the phone, I call Dr. Birdsong, I tell her here's what, here's, here's something I'm hearing that's bubbling up, right? Here I'm saying, share the concern, right, with the superintendent, stay neutral, keep it confidential, and trust that she's going to handle it.
Oh, you're on the contribution side? Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, the yellow.
That's kind of what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what they do.
So, so, but it's not in writing, it's just like a pick up the phone kind of thing.
Or email.
It's just writing, yeah.
So I usually-
Usually just forward them on.
Yeah, so it depends, so I can just tell you what I do. So if I have, and I'm, I'm opening up for critique, but if I have a community concern, if I know it involves confidential student information, I try to give Dr. Birdsong a write-up, and I'll write on the subject line confidential student information so that she knows, and if one day there's a FOIA, they know
Right.
that's what it has, or if it's confidential personnel. But I try to listen to the constituent, and I will, I will say to them, even before they get started, if you're going to say this to me, I'm going to share this with the superintendent, are you comfortable? Because I want them to know, if you're not comfortable with that process, you need to be aware of that. And so what I try to do is take my notes and write Dr. Birdsong an email, because at least for me, I think that's a passive thing where she then can read it, and usually what she'll do, at some point she'll read it and she'll get back to me and she'll say, we're on it. I feel like if I call her, it forces her to immediately respond to me, and I want her to have more flexibility
I appreciate that.
in a, in a passive way than feeling like,
Yeah.
you know, because if I call her, then I think it invokes like immediate reaction to me.
Yeah, I see, I like the process you just outlined, and it's probably different from person to person, and that's what we, we want to level set on a process, not, here's what I do, here's what Carlos does, here's what, right? And, and to your point, right? The reason why I'm suggesting that it be like an email or whatever, because then she can write back, it's been addressed, or that kind of thing. And you've got a, kind of a paper trail to say, right? And so, so, so I think that that's where, that's where I was going with that, that the sharing of concerns from the community and from constituents to the superintendent needs a process, so it's not all different ways. And I have here that you have confidence in her handling of the concern, but, and that could be as simple as her writing back and saying, we're on it, or have a meeting scheduled, or I'm going to visit that location on Tuesday. And that's, that's it, but it, we've got a paper trail. Does that make sense?
Right.
So I wasn't sure if, you know, because of FOIA, to your point, right? That, I mean, they're going to, they can FOIA whatever they want. But I do feel like, like that, that part of that process needs to be that there's like a written record. I, I, I heard this concern, took it to the superintendent, superintendent acknowledged receipt, and then has, and did a quick follow-up on resolution, right? Feedback on feedback.
And that's our process, and for me, that works. And, and that's my experience with the board. They will email.
So in writing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, usually what we do is respond to the email and copy it to Dr. Birdsong. And, and the, and the, what it'll usually say is, thank you for sharing your concerns. I am copying Dr. Birdsong, our superintendent, with this information so she can have you contacted by the person who can give you the help. Something like that, pretty much, yeah.
So we agree that that's the process.
I agree, and just for someone who can take those calls daily. It also shows history, so you have to reflect back on an incident and parents, because we have, you know, parents that we talk to, you know, often. So there's a paper trail and there's also history there, so.
Yeah, I think this process. Yeah, that's why I was suggesting it, because I think that, yes, you can be FOIAed, but also I think this, it's a protection, right? Yes, that concern was brought to our attention on such and such date, here's how it was handled. You've got that paper trail you can go back to. Okay. And do we need, do you need a template for that, or is it just the forwarding of the emails and that kind of thing, that, that works fine?
I know it works for me.
Oh, I think so, it works for me.
Campson uses that, I'm forwarding it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So it goes to her and I, my name is there, is having sent it on, and, and it, but it actually is addressed to the, the person that has the concern, and that's why I always do it as a, I'm copying this, too.
Right. And, and it also sounds like you do a summary document, if it was a, if it was a phone call, to say, in our conversation on such and such a date, we talked about this, I'm forwarding that information, too. So that, because it might not be an email.
And you're letting the parent or whoever it is know that it's, it's going, it's going to, right to the superintendent.
Right.
I, I do the same thing, you know, make sure you're telling me this, you know, confirming that this is going to go, you know, you're, are you asking me to, you know, send this along? Yes.
And I think, I think that one of the things you can even think about level setting on is some of those, those phrases and language, thank you for sharing this concern per our phone conversation, I'm elevating this, I'm sharing this with superintendent Birdsong, who is, who is in copy on this email, right? So use those phrases so that there's consistent language that comes from you all, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, that was easy. So this one is, so we've got a, we've got some, some guidance here. I also had Dr. Gabriel's question. Yeah, go ahead.
Under the process, we will incorporate student public comment and invite student representatives to work sessions. I, I really applaud our board for initiating a process to have a student board member.
Yeah, that was a great idea, Carlos.
And I think that we have had, we've had some phenomenal representatives, and we glean a lot from their perspective. But I don't think our process for incorporating their feedback is the best that it can be right now, and I think that we need to work on what that process is, because, you know, I'm a board member here, but I also take full responsibility for the fact that we are also in charge of our students, and I know Dr. Birdsong takes this very, very seriously. But there's certain situations where I think it's not necessary for them to be a part of certain conversations, and I don't want them to, I don't want to put them in a situation where,
They don't know what they don't know.
They don't know what they don't know, you know? A confidential matter, something where they might say something and it gets taken out of context. And I'm very protective of them in that sense. I want them to be able to share their thoughts, and, but I think that we need to develop a better process with that, and so I'm not ready for them to come to work sessions yet because I need to have a better understanding as to, you know, purpose, place, what are they doing, and, and all of that guidance. I want their feedback, but I just, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
The one we have now really does make very nice little speeches when we're, when we ask for her information at the end.
I'd like to comment on that.
She, does she attend?
The business meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, and so-
Business meetings, not board meet, not, not regular board meetings? She doesn't come to every?
Yeah, the, the, we have two a month, the, the work session and the business meeting. She attends the bus, both of them attend the business meetings, yes. So I, I'd like to add, I appreciate that feedback. And, and so from my perspective, I, I like that our board representatives are at our, our business meeting. There are a couple of things I do worry about. I know the, the students that serve on, on the board, they're high achievers and they're doing a million things, and so I, I wouldn't want to pressure them into coming to like work sessions, you know, because of their time. And, and, and I know with our current board representative, you know, when I've met with her one-on-one, I mean, her schedule is like crazy, but if we tell her she needs to be here, she's going to make it happen. So I, I'm, I'm not sure that them coming to work sessions is a, a real good use of their, their time. I also think we need to be very careful about allowing the students to make comments on things that they may not know all of the information about, because we did have a, a recent situation whereby the student made some comments about her school that were perceived as not necessarily 100% accurate, and then kind of blindsided her principal. And, and so you can imagine that, that, you know, just the position it put the principal in, and the position that it put her in, and with, especially with she not knowing the big picture. Of, of course, we, we appreciate their input and feedback, but for me as superintendent, and I even shared this with her, I'm very protective of her, almost feel like I'm her mom while, while she's here. While, I believe she's, so she's exceptionally brilliant, she is going to be the next president of the United States, I really believe that. But she's also 18 years old, she's also a student who doesn't know what she doesn't know, and some things she may say, she may not even know that what she's saying is not fully accurate. And so I, I know there are some things from me working with her that she's very interested in doing. And I've talked to, she used to have regular meetings with our chief schools officer, who is now retired, and, and so she's been meeting with the secondary schools executive director around what her work looks like within our schools. So I think a good op, it would be a wonderful opportunity to have her come back and talk about those things that she's passionate about, as opposed to the board is in a heated discussion about whatever, and then put her on the spot to respond, because she's going to want to respond.
Yeah.
because she's going to wanna respond, because she is a high achiever, she's very, um, she's very intellectual, she's brilliant. But again, she doesn't know what she doesn't know, and I feel very protective of her.
I'm wondering if that can also be part of the agenda development process. We say, which of these items re, would, how could we be better informed if we had student voice? Right, so you might, it might just be like, it might be based on topic, oh, we need to, as we build the agenda, this would be a great topic for us to explore with our student board member, she attends that meeting, yeah.
But I also think it's worth reaching out to the student board member to see, because we don't know what kind of conversations they might be having with their own, with their own peers. Because what we may think is not appropriate for them, they may be like, well, we've already been talking about that, and we need to talk about it, we need to be there.
Which is why we're meeting with her.
I saw a bunch of hands over here, I don't know which, what order they came in, so I'm gonna.
Yeah, so I, I'm glad that, that topic came up, because, um, you know, in twenty sixteen, we passed this policy to include a student board rep, and that's, um, been such a great action that we've taken, and I say action that we've taken, because, um, you know, I think to Dr. Gabriel's point, I don't think we've fulfilled that as best as we can. In terms of using their voice and, and everyone being on the same page as to how we do that. And I know two years ago, I know I asked to look at our policy again and to see, okay, well, how can we enhance and build upon what we're currently doing so that we can better use student voice? How do we use it? Where do we use it? How do we capture it? You know, so that we're hearing it in the board meeting? And using it to inform our decision-making process. You know, some of, you know, I think some of the argument about, they don't know what we, what they don't know could be also said about those of us who aren't in education as well, you know, because we're not in the classroom every day. I know teachers say that about us sometimes when they're at home watching our meetings. I know, they're like, well, you don't really know what it's like, you know, or principals will say, well, I would like for you to walk in my shoes, you know, because they don't know, you know, they know we don't know, um, um, what we don't know. So it's, it's, it's true, and maybe one of the things, you know, before we, we say, you know, taking this out, like, is there training that could, could go into, like, like we have board member training?
There is, actually.
You know, there's student board member training, which, um, I know V S B A has done, and, you know, maybe that's, um, something to look at, and so that we all learn how to participate in our board meetings. And that's something that, um, we can have our board representatives now and going forward participate in. Because I think there has been interest in participating in work sessions.
Was she on boarded, by the way? Like, what was it, was there an onboarding process for the student?
Yes, we had an internal, I don't know, not with like the board, but through the administration, yes.
And I think that's another, and that's great, I mean, we know that it happens, but what is, like, I personally don't even know what that looks like. And I think it'd be great.
Can have their own process that we can talk about and develop too, in, in collaboration with one another.
And I think that would be, that's, you know, I think that would be great, that we do have a conversation about what that looks like. Are there, are there items that, um, to your point, you know, on the agenda item, what's coming down the pipe that we can ask, you know, can we get our student board rep to go talk to students?
In, in advance of the meeting.
Calendar, for instance, what do our students think about, you know, the academic calendar, like, things like that.
I mean, imagine her being able to come back and say, I talked to thirty, thirty of my classmates, and here's, ten percent of them said this, ten percent said that, like, she's bringing new data, right?
And sometimes it might be a different perspective, we haven't even thought of that all.
Exactly, yeah, she's, she's definitely an underutilized resource. I put in my notes that we need to be thinking about how student voice can be part of the agenda filter, that we think about ways to, ways to invite her, um, that we need a process for involving her to help secure other student voice. So I kind of got most of that. So we'll, we need to kind of think it through a little bit deeper.
And her professional development, along with, along with ours, so that's, but anyway.
Similar to my fellow learner, I just pulled up the policy, and I think there's, I think the policy is clear. I think what may not be clear is, so when we brought forward this policy around student rep, the intention was that the student rep was, uh, had similar roles and responsibilities as an adult board member, except as it says, serves in advisory capacity and does not vote, does not attend closed meetings, so that's confidential information, and alternate serves in the absence of the student rep to the school board. The school division provides the meeting agenda and other public materials to the student representative in alternate in advance of each open meeting. The student representatives and alternate do not have access to confidential information, including student personnel records.
They can't get onboard docs or anything like that?
Not, not for confidential piece. The student liaison representative or alternate are expected to attend all regular open meetings and complete assignments for research and data collection when requested by the school board. I think that's clear. I think, I think what has, what has happened over time, and I think what I hear Dr. Birdsong speaking to is, if we had a student administrator program, then I see the value of the superintendent, the chiefs, the so forth, working in that realm. I think the value of the student rep is hearing, hearing their voice. And, but in terms of what Ms. Bassin was just saying, and we did this, I think when we first started working with student reps is, we train them just like we're supposed to train ourselves. So just as we teach that each board member may be, Ms. Buffalo is a, is a clerk. So when she's in the board mem, meeting, she's not supposed to speak as a clerk, she's supposed to speak as a board member. So if we tell student reps, you are representing the student voice, not your individual school voice. If you're bringing concerns, you're bringing concerns of the students, representing the students, not necessarily representing the students from the school in which you attend. And I think if we can clarify that in the training, then we won't, we can avoid scenarios, and none of, none of this is perfect, because we aren't.
Does she get, does she get a board member email address by any chance?
Yeah, she has, uh, I think we.
I think we, I, I don't think she does, because I think in the past, some inappropriate emails were being sent to our student representatives, and so we decided that that may not be, you know.
It's, yeah, we, we have to work through that, uh, but, but my point is, I think that we should treat, uh, student reps to the board as board members absent of those things that, that we know that they are not entitled to have. Otherwise, I think we are, um, we end up, what's the word for capping? We limit, we inhibit.
She's definitely underutilized.
Yeah, and I, I think we need to bring that forward, and I think the policy says that. And if we want to talk about some ways of operationalize it, if the superintendent wants to bring forth some regulations dealing with it, I think we can, we can address that there, but I think the policy is clear about what the expectations are. And I think as part of the selection process and the recommendation process, if one can't do that, then they know what the expectations are, and we don't have to have, you know, we can, we can be more supportive of, uh, student reps when we do work sessions. So if it's a student rep from Lake Taylor, enough to say we can't have work sessions from time to time out at Lake Taylor. We don't have to necessarily, as you say, be rigid, we can be innovative here.
And, and, you know, when I read this, at some point in time, Dr. Birdsong, I thought that there was a, a student committee or a student council that you had had, it might have been prior to COVID.
I still have one and recently met with him.
And, and, and so there's.
Do you attend those meetings? Does the board?
I, I facilitate those meetings by myself with children only.
It's a different role.
I'm wondering, though, if that's an opportunity for her to attend those meetings as well? Build her facilitation skills, right, have her lead the meeting, get voice. That's an opportunity for her, yeah.
That was one, I, I know I sent the recap from the Cube Conference, but that was one of the things I, really great session on elevating the student voice. And it was interesting that this school division, like, that they adopted a project. So they had this project that they were working on with other students, um, all year long, as well as still attending meetings and so forth. But it was even interesting that the students elected their person. So there was actually somebody that they felt that, you know, was elected by their body, they met with like the council. I said, well, it's kind of, I know Dr. Birdsong has one, but they went and facilitated and, and had voice. So there was some interesting things that I think that we're all talking about here, that I think could really elevate that program. And there was a great example of, um, you know, really the students come in saying, hey, we wanna change this, and teaching them, well, how do you go through this process of gathering information, come back, make a proposal, and bring it to the board?
And if I, if I can, I think that one, one thing I have felt that, I'd like to see Norfolk schools look at having strong student councils. I think that process. But I think the board rep process is a, is a, you know, is a different animal than I think from the board's perspective. We need to address that, but it's, I did, like, Mr. Clayton did, you know, did his things, I did student council all the time. And, and they would have, they would have retreats and sessions and trainings and citywide S C A and all of that. And so that was a place where that voice could happen for students in every school building. But I think the student board rep.
That's, there's value in that. I wrote down, like, maybe, because I mean, so she's a senior, I'm assuming, right, she's a. So we've got till June to, to really be, to really reshape, like, her contribution, right? And so maybe it is that project-based approach, where we say to her, we really wanna, as a board, we wanna explore the value of student councils. Your charge, right, is going to be to, she, maybe she might even come, come up with a great survey, right, that she could administer to all the schools, and she can collect data in that way, she can go speak at these places or do a Zoom, whatever the case is, and then come to you and say, here's what I'm hearing, here's what the streets are saying, streets are talking, and they said, right? But, but now you're giving her, you're, you're putting her.
She has a project that she's working on right now.
Role wants to have, no matter who it is, it's just purpose and contribution.
What's her project now?
She's working, I know that we recently scheduled her to go to Brooklyn to Washington High School, for example, and she doesn't attend that school. But her, it's something that she's passionate about, and it's related to student mental health and some other things that she wants to do. So, because she was passionate about that, we have, um, in working with Dr. Kimzy, she's scheduled some visits to different high schools, and the, the principals are organizing groups of students for her to meet with, so she can get some input and feedback and provide an update to the board. And something that she is passionate about.
And I wonder too, does she have an opportunity to see how other student board members around the country work?
Both of them were there.
Yeah, and Jordan, as, I mean, our alternative, uh, alternate school board rep as well.
All right, good, good, good. Okay, and then we got, it's three fifty-seven. Mind you, so you know, I always over prepare for these, like, we're on slide twenty-eight out of, guess how many slides? But I don't care, I'm like, I, I never want us to rush through, we've had some really valuable conversations here. Yeah, I know, I was, I was always ambitious, knowing that they'll, they'll spill into our next time together, that's fine. Okay, so the board efficacy is the last one, and then I wanna do a quick preview of what we're gonna be doing next time. But, um, so I added the language here, we talked about, um, active participation, I think that was one of the suggestions, taking ownership, right? So there was a couple of clarifiers that I added for you all, so take a look at these, is there anything that needs to be changed?
I think this is pretty thorough, what it's asking us to do. Robust, that's good. It takes in things that were on our last one, and then then put some new stuff that's important.
And the actions items I had put, because we had some conversation when we were leaving around, like, well, we don't want things to be in a perpetual parking lot, right? And so we need a process to decide what things go in the parking lot, it could be in the moment, but it also has to go through the filter of, does it title our priorities, is it, you know, student-centered? Uh, or does it, you know, does, should this carry over to the next agenda, because we need more time, more discussion or whatever? So I, I want you to think about, when there are things, for example, that come up and you say, well, um, we're not ready to make a decision on it, or, and you, and there's more time, it can be in the moment that you propose, we need additional time for this item, we're gonna put our questions in the parking lot. Parking lot could be, need to see more data, or need to hear the impact to families, whatever the case is. Knowing that it'll be moved to the next agenda, or, you know, or whatever that action item that comes as a result of the questions would then be addressed, that's why it goes in the parking lot. So I don't want you to think of the parking lot as off-topic, let's put it in the parking lot for whenever. It's not that, it's, it's, let's add this to the parking lot, or maybe something I didn't even, hadn't dawned on you until you were in the moment and said, huh. You know, this might impact what's happening at such and such school, we should definitely put in the parking lot that we need to inquire about X Y Z. Does that make sense? So I, I want you to think about the parking lot as not, not the place where things we don't like talking about go in perpetuity, but there are things that are related to the agenda, but that, that they would throw us off time if we spent time, if we, if we, if we shifted and spent time on just that, it would, it would take away from the agenda, so we say, we're gonna put it in the parking lot.
With the understanding that the parking lot is something that you come back to, and you determine when you go back to, right?
Because it may even be that when you, when you do agenda planning, the, you say, let's look at our parking lot, right? And, and the, the, the next agenda might be all parking lot, parking lot items that needed to be moved to that. And so that, sometimes the parking lot shapes the next agenda, you know? And then the other piece I put was from Dr., um, from Mr. Jordan, need to clarify the role of the attorney beyond consent and advise. I don't have suggestions for that, because I think that's a, that's a different conversation. So, and, and you expressed your concern, I think we, I think that that's a, a discussion that you all need to have as board members about, like, the, the role, the amount of input, I, I don't, I don't know.
Just think we should have, uh, an agreement, like we will with any attorney, so it clarifies the roles and so forth.
Like, that's more personnel?
Pardon me?
Do you think that might be more a personnel discussion rather than something that goes in here?
I'm not, I'm not following.
Asking.
Now, I, I hear, I'm not following what you're asking me.
When you were, for the item about what his role should be, it sounds like you were kind of saying beyond what was already there. It just struck me as that it might be more of a, something to discuss as a personnel item.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I'm just saying that there is no, there's nothing there now. So the policy just simply says that the board will hire, the board may hire, may have legal counsel. But what a lot of school divisions do, especially because they often use private counsel, you have a services agreement, just like if you went to an attorney and say, this is what I'm gonna do for you, and this is what it's gonna cost you. And so I'm just saying that I think we should adopt the practice of having clarity around the roles and responsibilities of the.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing, I think you're right on point, I'm not, wasn't disagreeing with you, I just wasn't sure that this was where that went.
So is it, so there's no, there isn't an existing policy, you're saying, that other boards have a policy around?
No, the policy just, the, and it's basically the sites, the state code, that boards may have a legal attorney, okay? But it doesn't say what the roles are. They leave that up to local divisions, because it may vary. I'm saying that in Norfolk, we don't have anything that specifies or clarifies what the, what it is. So in Virginia Beach, for example, they adopted a, uh, an agreement between their city council and attorney and the school board, that spelled out what the expectations were. So for example, I remember one of the clauses in there was, if it seemed like it might be a conflict of interest between the, the city and the, and the school, we would talk about it. So eventually, they just moved away from having the city attorney as their attorney. They moved that attorney inside and he worked for the school, but they, they were housed internally. And I'm saying, I just think that we need to have some conversation about spelling that out, so that, so just as we've spent time talking about the superintendent's role and the board's role, we're also clear about the legal counsel's role, because in my opinion, I think often there are things done that I think belong with the superintendent, and then it, I think it gets in the way. So I just think we just need to clarify that.
So for that discussion, would you be willing to look, provide us with some of those policies from neighboring districts? I think, because I think that's where you start, right, we shouldn't be reinventing the wheel, let's look at what some of our neighbors are doing. Um, and then see if that meets our needs. So as an action item, when I, I put this into a whole action item document, I'm gonna put research surrounding, uh, neighboring boards policies and practices around the attorney. Because I think we start there. All right, so other than that, is there anything else on this one? And you'll note too, right, so like, a lot, a lot of this is the behaviors pieces, so start, start means on time, and people being present and prepared, right? Valuing contributions of all members, taking ownership, right, these are a lot of those, these are behavior statements.
Ask you a question, is, is part of this work, and forgive me if you've already have done that, is there a, uh, a glossary of terminologies that, that gets created?
I can do that.
Well, the, the reason, and I don't, and I'm not, and I wanna drop a bomb in anything, but like, when you start off each meeting and where I agree with you a hundred percent, and you talk about, uh, dismantling and rebuilding and, you know, institutional change and so forth, one of the things that we had a conversation about in our, in our group was, I said, I felt I needed to understand what that means, because oftentimes, we can all read the same statement and have a different interpretation. So when I read dismantling, I read it through the lens and frame of reference that I have, somebody else may see it completely different. So it just seems to me, and that was why I thought, whether it's in the goals or something can be defined. But some of this terminology, I think it would be good if we had a glossary or something, so that if we are in the middle of the discussion, or if we are looking at this, or if we're onboarding somebody else, or if we have a student rep, we can say, this is what we mean, this is the definition that we're, that we use, almost what you did with the, uh, explaining the castle stuff.
All right, I put that in the notes. All right, I know we're at time, but can I indulge you for a few more minutes? Just because I want to do a little bit of forecasting as to where I'm gonna take you next. Which I kind of want to take you in this meeting, but that didn't happen, cause four o'clock gets here like this. So first, let me ask the question, can we adopt these norms as the working agreements and behavioral expectations for this board, as they are now with those corrections, obviously? Knowing that we've got the action items that I'm going to put on one document for us. But otherwise, are we saying that these will be the norms that we go forward with?
May we put them on the, on the business meeting when everybody is here versus doing it now? But yes.
Oh, cause we're missing.
Honestly, I, I, when I heard you say that, it's more like we will put it towards a consent. Like, we just get a general around here that we were moving on, that's all. Not that we were officially adopting it today.
Well, that's, that's why I asked for clarity.
No, no, I mean, yes.
I was hoping that we would adopt them as, I didn't know that Dr. Martin wasn't gonna be here.
Right, right.
Um, because I do want us to, like, I want to put these norms to bed, right? Like, I want us to say, these are the norms that we're agreeing to. So it may be, maybe the language, and maybe it's not adopt, maybe it's we, I don't know.
Our, our, our next meeting is on the, the twenty-fifth, and I think that if there's general consent here, then we just put it on the, so that Dr. Mark can be here and all of us can vote on it.
Yeah, no, I.
Cause I think it's important she.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That she be a part of it.
I don't think we should change them anymore.
No.
I just, I just think, we could agree to put them on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
With the prepare to vote, to, to include them for our record, that's all.
And that way, all of us say, we all agree, this is what, how we're going.
So we don't have six out of seven.
This is one of those items that needs all of us agreeing.
Exactly.
I agree. Okay, I'm gonna send, you guys will, I'll send you the, I'm gonna send you a cleaned up version of this for you guys to have your conversation on one twenty-five. Um, so you can adopt them on the twenty-fifth, right? Okay, perfect. All right. Here's some things I want you to think about. So we were gonna, we're gonna start our next time together talking about how we create coherence. And I had asked you to read the PELP coherence framework. What I, and we're gonna obviously move this to the next agenda, but what I want you to think about is, as you read through it, we're gonna go through each of these areas, cause where I'm taking you with it, I'm gonna save these slides for next time. But where I'm taking you with it is that I want you to apply PELP to when we start to do strategic planning monitoring. So in, in your folder, there's like a sample here, where I just took a district initiative, right? Made something up. And we said, oh, we're gonna implement consistent K-three literacy curriculum and instructional practice that raises achievement for all students. We're going to, as an activity with the board, go through the strategic plan and look at each of the areas of PELP around each of those goals. So it'll look something like this, right, where, here's, here's one of the goals for student excellence, right? Here's the first strategy, so I, literally just spread out of the strategic plan, these are screenshots. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, as a board, look and say, if the initiative is to provide resources and training to apply culturally relevant curriculum, instruction, materials, and teaching practices, what would that require of us? The culture, how does the strategy align to what we say we believe? What behaviors do we need from all staff and stakeholders to implement this strategy? Right, what systems and structures do we need to help people to get their job done effectively and efficiently around this strategy? What are the resources people need to effectively implement this strategy? How do we allocate resources that are coherent with this strategy? And how do we engage stakeholders to build ownership around this? The reason why I want to take you through that is because, right now, the strategic plan, right? It has, and it, it has, you know, the strategy, and then it has the measures. Something happens between that, between getting to the key performance indicator. That's where your work sits. Your work is in, what do we need to be monitoring? Have we ensured that we are addressing the culture, the structure, the systems, the resources, and stakeholders? The PELP research says that unless you consider all those areas, your strategy will not take hold, right? Because if you leave any of those areas out, if you don't consider the impact to stakeholders, if you don't think about what resources you need to do it, your strategy just becomes a tactic. It's just a one more thing we said we're gonna do, right? And what I want to ground you all in is that the work of this board is in ensuring that we are always monitoring getting to that key performance indicator. Yeah.
So with that, with the PELP framework, so you're always looking at the instructional core, right?
Always, yeah, so we're gonna talk about that, yeah.
Through each of these, it's those three things, right?
It's how do we make sure that whatever we talk about has impact to students and teachers in the way that they engage with content, right? That whole middle piece there. Um, and so, so, so that's where we're going. We didn't get the chance, chance to get there today, but if you, if you have, if you need to go back and thoroughly study PELP, we will start with PELP next time, cause we're, I, cause I really want to ground us in using PELP to frame our thinking. You'll see here that for each of the, each of the, um, I also put something on castle in the, in the folder for you all, cause you should, you should look at that too, cause we want to make sure we're using castle language. But for each of the strategies, I'm gonna take us through this exercise of us thinking about, like, what, what do we need to be thinking about? If we're, if we're, if this is a strategy, it's in our strategic plan, and we drive the strategic plan, we've gotta know what the culture is, you know, those, that's where you have influence. And so we're, I want to take us through that activity of thinking it through for each of these, for each area. Does that make sense?
Is that what we'll be kind of doing over the next couple of months?
Yes, exactly. Because then what we are, I also want you guys to start thinking about doing, right? Cause we'll be long gone, we have us till May. But I'm trying to build some habits, right? So I want you to think about every single board meeting, we're going to focus on one, right? One particular strategy, and we're gonna, we're gonna unpack it. We're gonna say, what data do we need? What, how are we monitoring this, right? So, so getting you to think about it in this way with the PELP kind of logic model is just a start. Because then what you're also gonna do is, once you come up with your monitoring calendar, you'll say, oh, for this, for our meeting in April, we're gonna do strategy one from community, right? And, and we're planning for that. What data do we need, right? What surveys have we put out, like, what's, you know, and that's the conversation in the room. So that's, that helps you stay grounded in, going back to the commitments around agenda development. It's always gonna be part of our priorities, it's always gonna be centered on students, right? We're gonna take the time, we're gonna be able to know that we're focusing this meeting on this particular goal from our strategic plan. Um, and measuring whether or not, how, are we gonna get to the key performance indicators that we, the goals that we espouse? Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's where I'm taking you all, it's kind of like our pathway. Yes.
You just reminded me of the, the, the one thing that I wanted to mention on that last board efficacy and accountability. And that was, um, for us to consider, um, whether at the end of each meeting, or whether it's, yes, somehow I think we should capture, uh, action items for, from each meeting.
Oh, I agree.
And make sure that that is disseminated. So we get to the next meeting, we are clear on what we said we were going to do. And then we can follow up as to whether or not we have done those things, and those may be.
Start the meeting with the, right, with the, the action items. But I think also in your agenda, you include.
Yes, that's to that.
This is what we're gonna do.
Mm-hmm. On that template that we shared, and, and, and we'll have to circle back to Dr. Martin and, and Ms. Buffalo. Um, cause on that template, it was, you know, like, what were the action items? You start with feedback on feedback. So he, the last time we met, we, we said we were gonna do X, Y, and Z, and people re, report out, yes. I, I, for example, with these action items, these, these needed actions. If we eventually decide who's gonna do what, you'll be able to say, I need to be on the agenda to share the surrounding district's policies on their use of the attorney, you know, cause I was charged with bringing that forward. Right, so we're gonna divide up that work around those action items, but you're always gonna be charged with bringing it back to the group. Um, so I do like that as a, always, always starting with the action, closing out with action items, right? Saying, okay, we, we agree at the end of this meeting, I'm gonna do this, you're gonna do that, da-da-da, bye. And we do action items by, you know, item, who's responsible, and by when.
Yes.
Simple, it could be on chart paper, right? And then the, the by when could be by the next meeting, or it could be by the next business meeting, or by, whatever, right? But people are clear when they walk out what they're charged with doing. And then they come back to the meeting and we say, here are the things we left off on, here are the things that were in the parking lot, here are things that, you know, we're gonna discuss today, whatever the case is. So these are all organizational pieces that are gonna help you get to that higher productivity. All right. Um, okay, and that's, so that's our plan. And then, so we're gonna do PELP next time, my slides are already made. We're gonna do PELP, we're gonna focus on the strategic plan, because, you know, one of the things, I'm still clicking. One of the things that we have to do as part of this work is you all still have to determine your board priorities. I don't think you can say what the priorities are, so we have that conversation about the things that need to happen, right? So that's, that's one of our, our, our up next. Vision and mission statement, that needs to be revised. I've been saying this for a long time, but it's fine, like, it's okay. Because to me, if, if you can clarify your priorities, it may change what we're, what we say is the vision of this board. So a lot of what we're doing now is going to inform some of these next step pieces. So don't be perplexed about, oh, my gosh, the vision and mission statement are still on the website as they are, that's okay. I think a lot of what we're doing now is gonna help inform that. And then the big piece is that theory of action work. Um, my, my thinking was, and I'm glad I didn't do it, cause I was gonna, actually gonna put a, um, a, a theory of action template in the folder, but I, I said, we probably won't get to that, so I'm gonna hold. But I am going to, probably after our next meeting, I want each person to develop a theory of action separately. And then we're gonna come together and we're gonna create a board's theory of action.
So you're gonna have a model for us?
I'm gonna have a model, it's a whole template, it's, it's literally four sentences, but, you know, if we then, right? So we'll, we'll, we're gonna do that, because that, those, there's two things that are here that have to be forward facing, well, three things that have to be forward facing. Board priorities need to go on the website, people need to be able to say, here's what our board is working on, right? And, and I feel like we're a little behind on that, cause it's January, and I would have, I, my hope was that we would have been there by now. So that needs to be forward facing, priorities need to be forward facing. The vision, mission statement, yes, needs to be revised, well, we can hold on that. But your theory of action for what you're going to do from twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four? That needs to be forward facing. So those are my priorities, is board priorities and theory of action. So in the next meeting, we're gonna go through and, and do the alignment to the strategic plan. I'm gonna flesh out those action items, I'm gonna incorporate some of what you said here. But I do want you to be thinking about, what's our theory of action and what are our priorities? Because that's gonna be a big part of our, our next steps. All right?
Thank you.
All right, before we close out, let's formally close out. Let's do a quick whip around, three things, you can pick one. Three concepts or ideas that are most important for you guys to enact upon. Two things that you want to further explore that we've talked about today, and one, what next step that we should take in our development? Cause it got rid of a team. So pick one, you ain't gotta, you don't have to do all, all, you don't have to do three, two, and one. Pick one, and let's do a quick whip around, whoever wants to go first.
Read them again?
Three, three concepts or ideas that are most important for you all to enact upon. Two concepts that you should further explore as a board. Like, I already heard, one of the things to further explore is the whole use of, use of the attorney, right? And then one next step, um, that you should take in your development, so. What you got?
All right.
Oh, go ahead.
The, um, what I didn't hear was about committees. At some point, we gotta put that in there.
Okay, concepts that are important for us to act from a process standpoint, I think, um, a clear understanding and process for the agenda planning. Um, concepts that we can further explore, um, uh, how to best incorporate student voice. Uh, next step that we should take in our governance development is reflect back on today and how that, um, will make us a better team going forward.
Love it.
About one.
That's okay.
For, once, the next step we should take in our development as a governance team. I would still like to see more, um, information or questioning, or, or something about our, our responsibilities, um, to make sure that we have students that are doing what they need to do. In other words, I'd like to see something on it, on, on more accountability for the board in relationship to children's progress.
Priorities, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, identify priorities, identify board priorities.
New priorities was a priority.
Right. And, and I, especially, you know, that, that theory of action conversation, if, when we, when we develop a very cohesive theory of action, because it's only, you know, three or four sentences, that you all, you see the clarity in that, but also the community sees it. They say, oh, our board is saying that if they focus, I'm, I'm putting words like, cause, you know, theory of action statements are if, if we then we expect, what is, results you expect to see. So if, if, if we can master that, and it's very clear both to you all and to the community, that becomes your talking point, right? That becomes the, here's, here's what the board is very focused on. We can't get to that theory of action until we first identify the priorities and looked at these different data pieces and that kind of thing. So we're building to that point. Um, it'll be there, but I want you, I want you to be thinking about what that looks like. Other, others, yeah.
Uh, I think we need to figure out a how we are going to align the budget process with the strategic plan at whatever level that it is today. We know it's more work to be done, but at the end of the day, I think if we say that, whatever it is, academic excellence, that I think, as the board discusses the budget that comes to us, I think the budget should come to us that reflects that. And I think the board should be able to eventually vote on a budget where we can see the connection between what we say we believe and inspire and what we fund in budget.
So that's, that's the, that's the value of that resources piece, right?
Yeah.
Because then we're saying, like, what, where, how do we put our money? How do we put our money where our mouth is, right? Um, and so that's that, that's the value of that, that piece. That's why PELP says that, you can't have a strategy, but then you have no way of funding it, right? And so each, each time we say, this is what we committed to, we, we committed to expanding behavioral services and dimensions and strategies to students with the largest need, well, there's a dollar amount tied to that, right? That constitution needs to happen at this table, so, okay, excellent.
I, I, I second that. And also, I think board, establishing board priorities, I would have liked to have seen us do that. So I think that's, that's, um.
Primary, yeah.
Primary, yeah, that needs, that needs to happen. Um, I too think that we need to prioritize exploring student voice and how we're utilizing our board member, student board member, you know, given that it's January as well. Um, one step, as a governance team, I think, um, you know, using, using what we're learning here. I mean, we've been talking about it, but I think the Clifton, the, the assessment that we took is helpful and knowing how we all, uh, kind of placed.
Just the gears turn.
What's that?
Yeah.
How the gears turn. How the gears turn for each of us, and appreciating and understanding and accepting that about each of us. I think, just, if it has to go on our name tag or whatever, you know?
I've seen that happen, by the way, people have done that, like, they have their color, right, like, so.
Yeah, like, whatever, you know, just, just remember, you know, it's, it's not personal, it's, I, I'm, I'm asking questions, you know, or whatever. But, yeah.
I will say, I, I really do appreciate that you all have, like, allowed us to, to let the process evolve, right? Like, remember early on, I kept saying, just trust the process, like, you know, I, I know when we first started, it was like, well, what's gonna happen in governance training from week to week or month to month? And what we're, what we decided to do, and what, it's, it's, hopefully you see this, right? Is that we developed this based on who you are, based on what the needs of the group are, right? And, and, and so that being fluid around this and taking our time and being substantive about it, I think there's greater value in it. Now, you might feel like, well, it's, it's January, yeah, but look how much progress we've made since July, right? I mean, I, I've seen progress, hopefully you all see it too. And I think that it's, it's in the taking of the time to do it in the way that you all need and not being locked into a certain protocol, I think that's been helpful. It's kind of the way that we, we, as, as a company, like, we always want to make sure that we are doing co-development, co-design. We don't come in with a one-size-fits-all kind of process, and I've seen the value of that, even in this group, right? That we took two hours today focused on relationship building. One might say, oh, my gosh, we get to, you know, I, even me sitting here like, okay, I gotta get through my seventy-six slides. But I'm also recognized that, yes, I prepared seventy-six slides, but I might only get to slide twenty-eight. And that's okay if we have the right conversations, if, you know, we walk a little bit, a little bit more clarity about what we're gonna be doing, and I, I see that happening. So hopefully you guys see it as well. Um, so I, so I thank you for that, I thank you for the time that you guys put in, I thank you for the effort that continues to happen. Uh, look for some follow-up emails from me around what we talked about today, but you have a sense of where we're going with this. And we, we are going to get dug in to the strategic plan and what the board's work is in helping to both monitor, you know, to, to create accountability around it. Cause at the end of the day, we gotta get to these goals. We gotta get to the goals that we, that we say are, are of value, right? And you have a lot of power in making that happen, so. That's what we're gonna be doing. You're stuck with us till May. So we got a few more months to get this done. Thank you, thank you all so much.
All right, well, thank you.
Come eat and cross your fingers.
For this governance training, and I see us all, this is a drive.
Adele loves to hit that, so you, yeah, you do it in her place. All right, thank you all.